Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Madam City Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Grunder.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Bladsworth.
Here.
Commissioner Howell. Commissioner White.
Here.
All right. We'll move on to approval of the agenda. Uh, we do have to add two things to new business, so those will be listed under four and five, or five and six, I believe. Is that correct? Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the amended agenda.
You didn't say what the amendments are.
Oh. Five will go under as Discuss, Consider an Act on Resolution 2024-CC regarding the Post Office Ground Lease Extension Agreement. And six will be Discuss, Consider an Act on Obligating ARPA Funds.
Do we need a new motion?
I make a motion that we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
All right, this has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Passes. Approval of consent agenda, minutes of November fourteenth, 2024 Commission Meeting, November twenty-first, twenty-four, uh, Commission Meeting, and the workshop from November twenty-first, 2024.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agendas from one, one, two, and three.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Moving on to special presentation. We will be hearing a presentation of a potential application for Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code text amendment.
Hey, good evening.
How's it, sir?
Appreciate y'all having us here. I'm Craig Bray, CHW. And I'm here with local property owners and business owners in High Springs, Stacey. And, uh, we would love to get your feedback, questions, and comments on, uh, their intent to expand a local business.
And, um, so, and to do that, there's a couple of applications that would be required, a couple of amendments, one to the Comprehensive Plan and one to the Land Development, uh, Code. They're mirroring policies and requirements, but they're in both documents. So like I said, they're looking to expand their business, which is a preschool. They want to add more students. And those amendments, which we'll get into a little more detail about, uh, would be required to achieve this. So the property has been developed at least since nineteen ninety with a single-story structure. The current owners purchased the property in 2021, made some improvements to, uh, operate their preschool, and then, uh, a Kids Life Academy opened in 2022. Here's a map showing where the property is located. For those of you who may not know where it's at, it's on the south side of 441, kind of on the east side of town, next to Veterans Memorial Park. Uh, we'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. Uh, next to a self-storage facility and down the road from, uh, portable building sales and a few churches. So this is, you know, it's on the 441 corridor. It's a corridor that's developed with similar type of intense, similar intensity uses. Here's a closer look at the property and what they intend to do. They want to put a twenty-four by thirty-six portable in the back in order to, uh, expand their student population. The issue that would require amendments to the comp plan and the land development regulations is that it's located within close proximity to the wellhead that's located in the park adjacent to the site. So, um, the current policies restrict all development within three hundred feet of the well, with, uh, current exceptions for that or for, uh, outdoor recreation uses with being the park. So we would be proposing to amend those, uh, those two policies and land development requirements to allow some exemptions to that prohibition on development within the first three hundred feet from the well. So the intent, and this is a conversation that goes back for about a year, uh, we've been working on it, they've been doing some due diligence, uh, goes back to like previous city manager, and we had crafted some language that was very narrow in the exclusions that would be allowed. So if I go back and you look at that map, you can see that this really applies to one property. It extends just a little bit beyond their site to the west, but very minimal. To the north is the 441 right-of-way, you have the park, and then you have a little bit more right-of-way and maybe a tiny bit of a property to the south. But this prohibition, as it is today, really impacts this one, one property. So the exclusions that we were proposing were limited, and they were very limiting to, it must be an existing use that is a conforming use that meets all other land development code, comprehensive plan requirements. It's limited to less than one acre in size, and, um, therefore it really is tailored so that it's not opening up possibilities for a whole lot of other, um, exclusions as a result of these amendments. So there again, it's really focused on this one property, but written in such a way as to not be exclusive of any, anybody else. So that's kind of the nature of what we're, you know, considering with applications. But I did want to give Brooke a chance to kind of give you a little bit more information about the business and, you know, their history here in High Springs.
Hello. Uh, I'm Brooke, um, Ganey. I've lived here my whole life. Um, my family's been here way beyond me. Um, Stacy is my business partner. Her family's been here a while, too. Her father-in-law, Ernie Orcutt, is one of our business owners in High Springs. So we're very much ingrained here. We decided to open up our preschool in, I think, 2020, and it came to fruition in twenty-two. And we currently have thirty-five students. And the issue that we've had since we've opened is that our current families have siblings that we have no room for. As everyone knows, High Springs is growing, whether we want it to or not. And we're trying to be able to accommodate for not only our current families that we have, but new families that are on our waitlist. So that is why we were trying to, you know, expand our preschool by this, um, small-size portable, but, um, we are, we could add an additional twenty-two, that would be the max number. It could be less than that, so.
Sure. So we'd love to hear any questions, comments, feedback that, that you may have so that we can take that into consideration as we continue our discussions with city staff and as they can continue their plans for their business expansion. So we're happy to entertain and provide you with as much information as we can.
So our land development code just doesn't regulate for something like this? What do we think the, the environmental impact will be with this building? Because it doesn't sound like a large building or a necessarily massive expansion.
Sure. So talking with them, uh, the environmental impact, there really isn't. It's a portable building, no problem with the building. It's, it's the distance to the well. The land develop, when I spoke to them, I let them know that I'm not in support of it because I'm protect, I want to protect anything I can from the well. Three hundred feet was put in the land development code in land use, and it's there to protect the city. However, I told them, I'm not the commission, so I told them to come make a presentation and see what your guys' feedback is, because my no is not final. But it would take amendments as you see to the land development code, which won't be that hard, because what you see later on in the ARPA is one of the things we have to do is update our land development code. And so if you make a tax amendment, it won't be that hard to do so. We just wrap that up within this. But the issue I, as, as a city, is the encroachment of anything three hundred feet. You put three hundred feet in there, you passed it as your land development code, and I'm going to stick to that. The risk of any development within three hundred feet, to me, is not risk the reward. So that's why I asked them to come do a presentation and get your feedback and comments, um, about coming here. Does that sound right?
Yeah, so that, that's consistent with the conversation. The, you know, previously, like I said, when it started, there was, you know, at that time, a year or so prior to the current city manager, there was support for it. It seemed like, uh, it was a reasonable approach due to the fact that it was limiting, so limiting, and the exclusions that would be allowed as a result of the language as proposed. And I can provide you with a copy of the draft language, um, just for the record, if you'd like to see that.
Absolutely.
Let me, let me con, stand, I didn't answer your question. The environmental impact, I think, will be very minimal. It's a portable building. It's, they're gonna, it's gonna roll in, they're gonna set it up and whatnot. It's not like they're digging in the ground, they're not developing it in that aspect. The problem that stopped me from letting this push through is just the distance from the well.
So, oh, go, no, go ahead.
Can, can, Kevin, can you put the map?
I'm sorry. Can you put the map back up there?
Yeah.
Where are you planning on placing? Well, get that off the screen. So the portable's going right there.
So it's far on the property.
Yeah, I see it, yeah.
That's almost at three hundred right there. I mean, it's, it's closer.
Go, go back to your distance measure. You had the circle there. So the circle's right there at the tree line, correct?
Yeah.
And then what would happen when you come in there and place that portable? What's going to happen between the portable and the other city tree line? Is that ground going to be tore up for parking? Is that going to be a playground area?
No, no. And, uh, one of the things that we're, one of the exercises we've been going through since the discussion originally started was trying to keep, uh, any additional impervious area under the water management district's threshold for, uh, review and permitting. So the, I believe that's a four thousand square foot threshold. So you got the building itself, which even though it's a portable and it's not on the ground, water will still flow under it, just like it does today. They don't look at it that way. We have to take that square footage into consideration as part of the impact. So we looked at that, and then plus any areas out front for some additional parking. And so we, uh, we're comfortable in that we can stay under that permitting threshold. So any improvement will be in front of the building where there's currently parking and pavement and drop-off. This back here, I believe, would be used for, uh, play area, just open space.
No drainage issue far as a?
That's correct. I mean, any, any small amendments we might make for the addition, it'd be expanding what's already there, and it wouldn't even be reviewed by the water management district. We would self-certify, you know, our engineers would.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question, a couple of questions? On this figure that you're, you're showing right now, can you use a pointer or something to show us where the closest well is?
So it's right there in that little shed at the center. So it would be, let's see, if I can, I'm not sure which one of these is a pointer.
I mean, I see the two tanks out front, so I have an idea, but I just want to see how far, that, that, that's very close to the well.
It's here, it's in this building.
Yeah, right next to it.
Right, right.
The farthest building to the east, you see on the screen.
Okay. And I have a question, Mr. Mayor. In terms of land development code regulations, is there anything that would prohibit them from expanding vertically instead of changing the horizontal footprint? If there was no modification to the horizontal footprint, if they just went and added something vertically?
The way I read the code, it says no development activity can be permitted, so.
Okay. Okay. I, I appreciate your presentation and the business owners. I've heard their name quite a bit, so I know that they've got deep roots. But this is a well that serves the entire population. And for me personally, I, I have a hard time making exception for one person for something that would, that could impact. I, I don't think that there would be impact, I get that. But I think that opens up a, a door to people asking. I know that the, the storage facility just to the, to the north is looking to expand, and they're also potentially within that three hundred feet. So then, you know, would that also mean we'd have to grant their request?
That's why I would like to leave you with a copy of the draft language to see.
Yeah, we've never seen that. I'd never heard that.
I didn't, I've never heard that either.
I'd be more than happy to.
I'd love to see it. Can we get copies of that made for all of us? And I, I agree with some of the things, but the other part I'm, I'm thinking is, if it's not a permanent building, and I think what the use of it is for, I think it matters. And I do, I completely understand, you know, you don't want to do anything that's going to impact that well, period. And from everything we're hearing, though, I don't think this is going to impact that well at all. I think this becomes more of a benefit to the community instead of less of one. So for me, I kind of look at it with the, the fact that it's a portable, it can be removed. I think if we word this appropriately and show our intention and make it very clear in the beginning about it, I, I don't, I myself wouldn't have an issue with it as long as it doesn't impact the well. That's my, that's my stance.
My thing is, we already got a building that's already there, what's one more smaller and portable.
Portable building.
Now, if they were going to bust ground, start digging, throw in sewer stuff, yeah, all those things, I, I would be concerned.
And I, and I, for me, uh, Commissioner White's mentioned, I'm assuming it's a lot more expensive to go up than it is to put this. I mean, yeah, absolutely. That is, that even the way that my, my reading, it wouldn't allow any developments permitting.
So now what happens, uh, are y'all on sewer there? City sewer, or is that septic tank?
Septic.
Okay, so what's that going to do now? Are you going to be able to attach to the current septic tank, or now we have to put another one down? Or is there going to be a bathroom facility in the portable?
Um, I believe the conversations they've had, there would likely be a new septic.
And what would that possibly be?
I think the, the existing one would be upgraded, and the state now requires any, uh, septic system in this area, because you were what's called a BMAP, a Basin Management Action Plan area, uh, to be the enhanced nutrient-reducing system. So as of July of last year, any system on, on a piece of property less than one acre has to be that enhanced system. So it would actually be an upgrade over what's there today.
So it'd be two septic systems there.
One.
One, just upgraded.
It would still just be one upgraded.
Gotcha, okay. Do we know where that current location is right now?
I believe it's also out in front.
Along with the drain field as well?
Yeah, probably right there, yeah, that, so if you see, like, to the northwest of the house where the grass is a little greener? That's, that's usually a pretty good indication. It's usually a good indication.
I did have a question. So when you were talking about land development code, they could put a playground there? Because you all said something about in the code now, a playground could go right there.
Because that wouldn't, oh, that wouldn't necessarily require.
No, I'm getting somewhere with that.
Okay.
You can put that there, right? So what would be the difference, but putting a portable building, what's not digging up, than digging up stuff for playgrounds? Because you don't have to dig for a playground. So it would actually be safer to put a portable building there than to put a playground there? Because they could put a playground there if they wanted to, with our land development code.
Christine, can you feedback?
Was he asking whether they could do a playground?
Yes, with our current land development code, you all mentioned it when you were talking, that, that a playground could go there. Not that they want a playground, they don't want a playground there. But if you put a playground there, you're going to be digging to put a playground there. They're just going to put a portable building, which is much safer than them putting a port, than them putting a playground right there. So I'm trying to weigh out the pros and cons.
I think it depends on your definition of, uh, development, whether you think a playground would count as development.
I know.
Yeah, I, I mean, the way I read it is anything, it's development permitting activity, and, uh, typically a playground's not permitted. So I would agree that, yes, a per, I mean, a playground would be allowed because there's no real construction or permitting, just placing of some pre-made structures on a site that, you know, kids jump around on. So just, just so I know, just for the record, no matter what, even if this portable doesn't go in, when that septic has to be redone, it has to be upgraded anyway, correct? That's correct. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask one question? It's, it's kind of unrelated, but tangential. How is it possible that we don't have city wastewater running along the 441 corridor?
Go ahead, Jason.
Okay.
Came up, said that, came back.
We don't have it on 441, we have it on, uh, railroad. Their property backs up to another property, but it also is, uh, side, beside our property. So there's possibility that we could get city sewer there, but we'd have to look into it, have the talks.
Because, I mean, we're talking, I, I didn't realize that we had septic out here. We're talking about increasing the capacity of the, the drain field.
Correct.
That's right there adjacent to a municipal water well. Now, potentiometrically, though, I, I'd be interested to see a potentiometric surface map or some kind of contour map. I imagine that the well is still up gradient of this, you know, groundwater's probably flowing away from the well. But, um, we're, we're going to increase, if you, if you're going to go from thirty-seven, um, students to adding twenty-two, that's a pretty significant increase in terms of the, the wastewater that's going to the septic tank and the drain field.
Yeah.
It just is.
Yeah.
Not disagreeing, I just don't know what the, those numbers look like.
I mean, we talk about, you know, there's not going to be any impact to the, to the water supply well. How do we do that? We don't, we don't, we can't prove that in advance. We could prove impact after there was impact. You know, I, I don't know. You know, we, we've got background data, obviously. You know, we test the wells regularly, but, um, it's really close to the well.
I'd be more concerned with the sewer than I am the portable building issue.
Agreed, agreed.
Completely. I have no issue with that portable being placed there for growth. Within the three hundred feet, now we're talking about a sewer system that's just a regular septic tank. When we could tap on the sewer system and completely keep that area clean for the well.
That's a much more expensive.
It's already, sorry, Mr. Mayor, Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It already has the septic, correct?
That's correct.
So if you were tapping into that septic, having to be upgraded, then you're just running pipes into that septic, correct? Okay. So we're not enlarging this, the field, the septic field or anything like that?
By that, I, I mean, that I don't know what the calculations would be. There, getting back to that, that question of increased flows, does it, does it require a, a slightly larger, that, that I don't know. I would assume it may. So it may require a larger tank, but there again, it would be the enhanced nutrient-removal system. So in my, you know, I think it's fair to say that it would be an upgrade over what's there today. Even if it's a little larger.
Yeah, do we know when the last time they upgraded that septic system was?
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one?
So when they were making, so, yeah. So it was before the.
Before all the regulations.
Before the regulations went into effect, it would require that.
So it'd be better.
But this is, this is exactly the feedback and the conversations we were looking for, so we, you know, we do appreciate it.
Yeah, I would be interested to know if the, the.
And we can, we have topo maps, you know, we can, we can definitely show you if it's up or downhill from where the well's at.
I think a lot of that's important. I mean, this is a big decision. We want to, we want to do everything we can to support local business, especially local businesses like this. I've gotten, probably of those thirty-five, I've probably gotten twenty, so phone calls telling me we need to go ahead and do this because people don't want to take their kids somewhere else because of how well they're treated. So, I mean, that's a testament, and it's nice to know the people who are watching your kids, so I can tell you that. So, you know, this is something I think we would all love to do, we just got to make sure it doesn't impact that. So you, you've kind of heard some of the stuff that we're concerned about.
Absolutely.
I don't think that, and this is my opinion, not, this is one oh five opinion, I don't think this is that big of a hurdle to get over. I really don't. I think this is something we could probably get done, especially since it's a portable, it can be removed, it's not, and I like the idea of upgrading the septic system that is right next to the well to a better system than what is there at the moment. I really like that. I would be interested in knowing if the, the drain field's going to need to be bigger and just how impactful this will be. I would like some, some, as tangible numbers as we can get.
Absolutely. That, that can all be provided as supporting material with any application that we decide to move forward with.
Any other questions?
One question, please, Mr. Mayor. This revised text that you provided us, how did this come about? Because I've not seen this.
We drafted this about a year ago.
Okay.
In, in conjunction with previous city management and staff.
Okay.
And, and our clients, of course. So it was a back and forth, and then they were, you know, also doing some numbers on the expansion. So it's been an ongoing process. It's not something that we just, you know, are kind of rushing into. We, we took some time to craft that and got feedback, and there again, really narrowed the focus of where those exclusions would apply. And what they would apply to. So hopefully, if you have any questions about that, we can, you know, I, I, your staff has our contact information. But we do, we do appreciate it. We appreciate the opportunity.
No, thank y'all.
Okay.
Do the citizen comment for that? No, right? Well, no, I didn't know if we did it for a special presentation. Okay. Just getting into this, everybody work with me. Uh, moving into unfinished business, we're going to Discuss, Consider, and Act on Ordinance twenty, twenty-four dash oh seven. Please, sir.
This is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh seven, ordinance pending effective date of December twenty-fourth, twenty-second. Providing effective date, providing of, to go to ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh seven, coming to meet.
You're up.
Mayor, this is just second reading, there's no changes since last presentation. Um, it was what we went through at the last meeting, just finalizing the fiscal year twenty-four budget. Obviously, that year is done, it doesn't impact what we can spend for twenty-four's money.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh seven.
Second.
Has been properly moved and seconded. Do we have any, uh, citizen comment about that? Nope. Okay. Properly moved and seconded, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, is it will call? I got excited, I thought it was going to be. Almost, almost.
Mayor Grunder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Bladsworth.
Yes.
Commissioner Howell.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Glad you know what's going on, just tell me what I'm doing wrong. Glad I got both y'all next to me, y'all keeping me on track tonight. Okay, moving on to unfinished business, and item number two, Discuss, Consider, and Act on Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh eight.
Mr. Mayor, this is an ordinance of the City of High Springs, Florida, creating Chapter sixty-six, Article five, prohibiting public camping or sleeping on any public property, public building, or public right-of-way, amending section two dash one seventy-nine by adding a violation of section sixty-six dash ninety to the schedule of violations and adding a civil citation penalty for violation of section sixty-six dash ninety, providing for codification, providing for the repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severance of invalid provisions, and providing an effective date. Appropriate motion is passed, ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero eight, upon its reading by title only.
This is the, that second reading of the public camping. Chief, have we had any movement with the, the one individual on the? I know you guys were using services form last time.
Yes, we have. Uh, I think it's been like the last week and a half that he's, uh, vacated and, um, acquired services somewhere else, so that problem's resolved.
You're amazing.
No.
You guys are amazing.
May I ask Chief a question, please, Mr. Mayor? Chief, can I ask you a question? It's okay.
Sorry.
Just we thought you were getting out.
I know that there was, there was the one individual that was fairly high-profile, and it was really impacting the businesses, but there's, he's not the only one. So you've got other folks that you know of.
I have no one in public spaces.
Oh, is that right? The other?
So this is public spaces. We do have, we just had a, um, a couple people on private property, we had Intertime Fitnesses, and we made arrests in those cases where one person had a warrant and they were trespassing. So I, I do have people in, sometimes in private properties, and we try to find those locations, but if they're private land, you know, the own home, or the property owner needs to contact us and we can take care of that. I don't have anybody, to my knowledge, in public spaces, um, to my knowledge, right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
I make a motion that we pass ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh eight.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. It's been properly moved and seconded, do we have any public comment about ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh eight? So roll call.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Bloodsworth.
Yes.
Commissioner Howell.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Mayor Grunder.
Yes. All right, moving on to unfinished business item number three. Discuss, consider, and act on the engineer's recommendation of, of award and certified bid tabulation for FDEP County Road two thirty-six wastewater extension agreement number WG zero three four. And before we even get started, um. Mister Attorney, are you sure I can talk about, or I can be involved in this, since my road is directly affected by this? I don't want to step over anything.
No, you can, you can proceed with it because it's a general improvement to the overall community, so, so it doesn't affect you as a, as an ethics problem.
Okay. All right.
So what this is, we talked about it last month, this is a grant that we got a couple years ago, the match on it was like four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. We don't have four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to match this grant. Talking at the grant door, we declined the grant, this is before I got here, we declined the grant a couple years ago. They followed up to see if we were still interested, I told them we didn't have the money. They came back a couple weeks later and said, we'll fund it a hundred percent. So we have a short timeline to accept this grant, but it affects, um, affects twenty-two homes. So what we did last week is we put out a letter and it was taped, uh, to all their doors, we had our public works guys go out and put a letter. And we got a call and saying it wasn't completely clear, so we cleared up some of the information and gave them a second letter uh, describing, when I said it was fully funded, the project is fully funded. What is not funded is the impact fee for hooking into the system. That's required of every, every new household that gets, um, hooked into our system has, uh, impact fees of about twenty-one hundred dollars. Twenty-one hundred dollars, roughly? Twenty-one. So what we did to make this, um, I sent this to the attorney's office, and Danielle from the attorney's office cleared up. What we used to do in the past is we would run the line and allow the people the option to hook up to it. If they choose that with this grant, it, it's funded, they still have to pay the impact fee, but it's funded. If they decide later, I don't want to hook up to it, but I wanted to keep my septic, in the past, we allowed them to keep their septic, and then when their septic fails, we don't re-permit and they have to. That was the direction that we were going to go to, because that's what we've done historically. After talking to the asserted attorney's office, that's against statute. If it's within two hundred feet, two hundred feet? Two hundred feet of the existing available sewer, state statute says you have to connect to it. So if you approve this grant, it will expand the wastewater out on two thirty-six to the three affected roads, about twenty-two houses, and they will be required to, uh, to do it. We, what we did to make it a little bit easier is the required impact fee, the twenty-one hundred dollars, we spread it over three years, interest-free, just it's going to be on their water bill a little bit extra until the impact fee is, uh, paid. Also, um. I forget what I was going to say. But that's, that's the, the gist of what's in front of you. We have gotten phone calls with questions, we've tried to clear them up, concerns. Um, we, you do have a letter in front of you for, um, from a citizen that couldn't be here tonight, that's, uh, they're expressing, uh, their concerns with it. It's just, it's really up to you as a city. I talked to H U today, and I'll, I'll say this in public, I, I'll say this in public. As a city, city manager, I am for this project. We, we are running water, and we're running out, um, not water, sewer. It's a gravity-fed sewer, it's not the grinder system, and we're expanding our sewer services to, uh, serve a bigger community. Also, there's a ratio that Jason, Jason, why don't you come on up real quick? Um, can explain to you? You don't have to talk about the ratio, Jason, about.
It's pretty simple, um, we talk about, on average. About six hundred thousand gallons of water and supply it to the city a day. And eventually, we're going to have to get to where we need to, if we're supplying them with water, we need to capture it, treat it, and then safely put it, it goes into aquifer and it's treated. So, right now, I mean, that's why DEP fully funded this thing, is because it's important to them, and it will be important to us in the future. If we, um, are pumping six hundred thousand gallons at a day, we need to capture all the water that we can and bring that number closer that we treat wastewater. You got your water here, and you bring your wastewater up. We'll never ever get all of it because people water their flowers, wash their cars, but eventually, this project, we'll have to do it anyway. When they get strict and they start regulating us to do it. Now we're fully funded, um, it's amazing that we're fully funded. Down the road, we might not be fully funded, I think it's one point eight million, something like that right now.
So, so with it is, one, we're not going to get this kind of opportunity again. They're waiving the four hundred and fifteen thousand dollar match, they're funding it all. That's, that's, I think, one point four million, I think it's what it comes up to. That's a lot of money that we have for free that we could be using. As a city, it's a good move. The problem I have with it is talking to some of these citizens on a personal aspect, and I don't put a personal aspect up on this chair very often. But there are people who put in recent septics and whatnot, and I'd be a little, I would be a little irritated if I just put a septic in and some, and the city came in, ran a water line, required me to do it, and what this grant will do is crush the existing, uh, septic tanks. So it's, it's, as a city, it's a good project, I just. I hate forcing it.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question? More than a year ago, about a year and a half ago, the proposed wastewater expansion up two thirty-six out to the interstate project was being pitched by the previous city manager and the assistant city manager. And the folks impacted in that project were assured they were not going to be forced to hook up. Now, it was a different design, different scenario, it was a forced main, you know, a little bit different scenario, however. They were assured by the city manager that they would not have to be forced to hook up. Has that state statute changed? Is the nature of the, the project different?
Yeah, that project was to get the utilities two seventy-five in that area. A main, there's a hotel there that's neat, being finished or something, that's totally different. So the whole line there, they were saying basically those people don't have to hook up, just where they're getting it to. This project is for, um, capturing the water on two oh first, two hundredth, and one ninety-ninth. They already have water supplied to them, it's a total different thing.
I understand that, but it was the.
Let me answer your question, let me answer your question, is, no, the statute has not changed. This is a similar, in my head, I'm equating this to a similar si- situation to the brewery. We were doing things before trying to accommodate, and then found out that we didn't have any mechanism to do that. This is something that's similar, we do not have a mechanism in place that allows us to make it optional. The city attorney has found it, his opinion is state statute requires it, is not an option. I wanted it to be an option, that's what we explored when I pitched it to you at the last meeting. That's when we found out it's a state statute, so they, so, yes, they may have been told by a previous administration, I wasn't here for that, that they would have the option, and that's what we've done historically, when we found out that is wrong and is against state statute, and it, and we would lose funding on the grant from it.
So this, this funding is project-specific, and we couldn't use this money to say, make part of the system gravity instead of grinder?
No, we lose it if we don't use it, and also, next time, it might not, they might not, might hurt us getting the next funding, also. Because DEP's putting work into it to get us this, because it's important, and if we go through all this process and turn it down, it could be possible that we don't get as much next time. Another city will be, you know, getting the money.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir, please.
So with the statute, did we say the statute did not change, or is it just for this project? So going forward, we expand in another location in town, sewer, folks are going to have to hook up, they have no choice. My only problem I have with this project, let's say, for instance, somebody's built a house within a year, they paid that two thousand dollars impact fee to us, now we're going to make them pay another two thousand dollar impact fee to hook up?
No. If they built a house and it has septic, they're not hooked up to the sewer, they won't pay the sewer impact fee because they did not connect to our sewer line. But if you build a house and it connects to the sewer, or a year later, we run sewer out there and then they're required to connect, that's when we charge the impact fee of the twenty-one hundred dollars.
I understand that. But hundred ninety-ninth and two hundred are older homes. And I rode through there just to make sure, I used to deliver there, but I wanted to get a fresh view, and two hundred first are new homes. Meaning, those septic tanks should be perfectly fine, because I don't, I'm sure within the years, fifteen, twenty years. Now. Two hundredth and a hundred ninety-ninth, obviously, are older homes because they got bigger trees, that could be an issue, but these new homes that these people have paid with, you're saying now if they paid within a year, they don't have to pay again to hook up to this new system?
I'm not understanding, I'm not understanding.
No, they were, he's saying, the o- the only home in question, I think, is, uh, on one ninety-ninth, that's the only one that's got a new home. Everybody else, I'm on two oh one, my parents are on two hundred, and then one ninety-nine, and one ninety-nine's got the only new home. Everybody else is about, I think I'm one of the younger homes, and it's twenty, we're at twenty. But they, yes, they would have to hook up, and they would have to pay to hook up.
I mean, I feel sorry for that person that just built that brand-new home.
Could we? And I know you go case by case, you start getting into a slippery slope. But I don't think we're big enough to where we can say we can't look at case by case. Could we waive that impact fee for that individual, since it's a unique situation where they, literally, that was unbuilt land for my entire life, which is forty years? And way before that, because that's all Sutton Estates right in there, is that, is there a way to waive that? And I know that's a very slippery slope that we're even talking about, but I agree, that was a very expensive deal, and it was a, a good thing for our community.
Official answer is yes, you can, it's a commission, you can waive the impact fee. Um. Don't hate it, but what, again, it's a very slippery slope, because in future projects, when we run another water line, they're going to, you know, they have the argument, you waived it for this one. Also, you're talking twenty-two houses at twenty-one hundred dollars apiece, just shy of fifty thousand dollars. But think about this, is we didn't budget for that fifty thousand for impact fees. Um, and we don't really budget for its impact fees, but that's fifty thousand of impact fees you will be losing for infrastructure.
Well, I'm saying for just that one individual, since you're on a unique scenario, not.
As a commission, yes, you can.
And I had a question. I'm sorry, didn't mean to.
Oh, you go ahead.
I'll be happy to research that and see, Mr. Mayor, if there is a very narrow exception that can be made for that.
Thank you, sir.
Happy to look at it.
The problem is, is because we found out about this grant, and we're under a very time, very strict timeline, we, they wanted an answer whether we're going to accept this two weeks ago, and we got them to push it out, we need to make a decision on this, or we're going to lose the funding.
Well, we weren't going to have impact fees if this project wasn't here anyway.
Correct.
And I, I, I tell you, I just hate for the people that, as a government, we're going to force them, and I know we got to change all that here to get High Springs on the sewer system, protect our waterways. That's going to have to happen for future, for sure. I'm also in favor of waiving that one individual, but then again, five years down the road, we have another situation, and we got four or five that's wanting to be waived. I also don't want to open ourselves up for whatever, even though we may not be here in five years, somebody else be sitting up here, and they're going to have to deal with issues we're leaving behind.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
So that goes, it goes back to my, I'm sorry, Chad, um, it goes back to my point is, as a city, I gave you my stance, but as a person, I'm, I'm struggling with this, as a citizen, um.
And we're all sympathetic toward the, the, any type we bring in, a, a cost on to anybody.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Please.
Jason, you mentioned, and in your professional opinion, say we move this, we don't take this. Do you truly believe in the future the state could come in and say, you're doing this and you're going to pay for it?
They'll, they'll, yeah, they want us to capture that water, um, I believe it'll come. I mean, they're here to protect the aquifer and get clean water back into it. So everything we're pumping out of the ground, they want to see it going back in, and know it's treated safely and put back into the aquifer. So eventually, they will regulate it.
This, this, the state is making measures and grant grounds already to limit septic tanks as a whole. They're, they're getting away, they want nothing to do with septic tanks, and that's why we're getting funding for the sewer. So I do think in the future, it's going to be required, especially within city limits.
And if we don't take this grant, ultimately, if that happens, then the city's going to have to fork out that money.
I don't see it anytime soon, I don't see that mandate coming down anytime soon, but I do see it coming in the future.
Uh, my question was for Diane, um, when you asked about twenty-one hundred, you were hesitant, is there another fee that's involved with this, other than the twenty-one hundred?
No, I'm just used to water and sewer both being together for twenty-three seventy, so I was just making sure I had them separate.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I've got a, a question, I guess maybe a comment. In, looking at this system in its entirety, you know, we're, we're currently expanding the wastewater treatment plant. We're testing out infiltrated wetlands that we hope work. We hope no, no sinkholes open up. I'm thinking the low-hanging fruit in terms of making sure we're hooking people up is all the new construction that's going to be going on in Bridlewood. That's our low-hanging fruit, we've got to get all of that. That's a no-brainer, people know it when they're going in. I, I hearken back to Cinnamon Hills, when they were building there, and we had some new homes in Cinnamon Hills, and then they had all just put in new wells and put in new septic, and they were forced to hook up. And that, that was before any of us were up here, but that didn't go over too well. Um, I think that if we're focusing on the larger-scale developments, and we've got two or three years of data, making sure that there's no sinkholes opening up under the wetlands, and it's actually working, once Bridlewood is built out, we're going to be close to capacity already in our second plant, anyway. Um, so we are, if we're focusing on the larger scale, that to me is the most, the more important, rather than going for this one project that would impact twenty-two residents. Especially with the new construction, they've got a great septic tank. And there are grants available through the county if they want to upgrade their septic tanks, that Elachua County will help pay for that. Is that something worth exploring as a means to making sure we're doing everything, doing our due diligence to protect the environment?
That's a decision for y'all, I'm just, I just wanted to tell y'all, you know, we need to capture the water, and that's what this grant's for.
Yeah.
I really don't want to, you know, make a decision on that.
I just, I'm really hesitant to, to force anybody to do this. If, if, when we were talking about it last time, and there was the option that not force, I had no problem with somebody not being able to site a, a second septic tank. Once you have to abandon a septic tank, then you have to hook up. I don't have a problem with that, because it's not just a twenty-one hundred dollar cost, it's a cost of now their wastewater bill. You got your water bill, but the wastewater is a lot higher than water is. So their recurring costs every month are going to go up, too. And that's not insignificant. So, um, it's not that I don't understand that taking free money is important, but I think focusing on the big picture and making sure the expansion is, is functional, the wetlands are working, and focusing on Bridlewood and other larger developments right now is, to me, more important.
Yeah, the whole idea is, there's, they don't have inspections on, uh, septic tanks, so you never know if it's leaking, how it's being entered into the aquifer. So this way, if we're providing them water, we know if we are capturing it, we're regulated, we're going to do it the right way and make it clean and safe for when it goes back in the aquifer. So twenty-two houses is twenty-two houses, but we're feeding them water. We want to capture that clean at the right way, because there could be twenty houses that have a septic tank that's been working this whole time, but it's not working properly. There's not yearly inspections on septic tanks, there's not, there's no, there's nothing.
But that is something that's within our purview. We could, see, and that's something that I think is reasonable to, to, to discuss, is making sure that the septic tanks that we have here in, in the community are operating properly. That's kind of a different, different scenario, but I get, I get what you're saying, totally.
Correct.
I mean, who, who has theirs pumped out every year? Who has theirs treated, you know, who, who, who's paying the kind of attention they should? Everybody should be.
Well, you can have your septic tank pumped out, and that don't mean it's still working good.
Right.
I mean, that's just, it's full, you know, so.
Yeah, because I was going to ask that question, could we create a, I guess it would be an ordinance where they would have to be required to get a check yearly?
So we can, we can make that requi- uh, requirement is a yearly or bi-yearly or every-two-year, uh, inspection. The problem hung up, and without hashing out the details is the enforcement of it. How are we going to track every septic and make sure that they're within regulation? Is it possible? Yes, it is. But you're talking a lot of staff time, and that comes with a cost as well.
So, for, forgive me. Um, so, I agree, I hate forcing cost on people, but you guys are sitting saying, we don't want to force the impact fees, but we're going to make them do an inspection on their su- sewagees? So we're forcing another cost on them?
I think it would be a lot less.
Goes from twenty, I, that was, uh, Mr. Howard, that was the exact same thing I was going to say is, and I'm one of the twenty. So, I, I had planned on sitting up here and not saying anything, and it's probably be, that's in my best interest to just shut up, but I've never been good at that. But, yeah, we, we don't want to force twenty people, but we'll force fif- five thousand homes to get it done. No. That to me. No. That, to me, is just, is different. It's, I do think, I mean, this is the way of, it's going. If you live this close, and you're that close to that, that, this is the way it's going. And I hate the idea of forcing anybody to do anything, but unfortunately, if we wanna sit up here and talk about how much we care about the water, it's gonna be damn expensive to take care of that water. And unfortunately, I think, being one of the people that's gonna pay that twenty-one hundred, and have the incurred cost of, uh, the now, the, the sewer water, I think it'd be irresponsible, though, to not do everything we can to try to recapture that. And I think, Jason, I think you have done a fantastic job explaining exactly why we need to take it.
So if we go to another section in town and have the same project, those same citizens are gonna pay that twenty-one twenty to have to hook up, correct?
Yep, if they have water, if we're supplying them with water, it could become to another section in town, yes, it'll be the same thing.
Yeah, I think, now, just to answer you, what you just mentioned about, um, forcing them to do that. So once you hook up, the amount, your monthly payment is going to be more. So you're still gonna save, even if we ask you just to get a yearly check, because your monthly, my water bill just went up twenty dollars. So like, in the end, it's gonna make a difference. Because your yearly fee ain't gonna be more than what you're paying monthly.
And I, I completely understand, but I, somebody mentioned moving forward and looking at the bigger picture. I think this, moving to gravity-fed sewage system, and moving forward for the city, is, is a positive thing. And I hate the cost for the people, I really do.
How did this come about? Did they reach out to you, or did somebody reach out to them?
They reached out to us.
Okay.
Why the, the rush with this project? Why is the, seems like we have time to think about some things, but this one here, we're being like, throw it in our lap, and we gotta decide now.
Because the funding period is closing. This grant was awarded to us two year, almost three years ago, and now they're saying, because some other people didn't take grants, and now they have more money, and they're like, we'll throw more money into the pot, but they gotta get this closed out. That's why they're, they're, they've been honest about it.
We talked about this, what, two years ago? I think when I first got on.
When we decided not to take it, yeah. Um, did we, did the city actually do, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I could ask another question? Um, did the city do the original grant application? Were we the genesis of seeking this fun, these funds out, or, you know, D E P doesn't normally say, hey, you know, knock, knock, we'll give you a million dollars.
The city applied for a grant.
Okay, so we, as a city, were looking to do this project for three years.
Let me back up. I'm not certain.
Okay.
I don't, I, I wasn't here, and I'm getting, I'm getting, I'm getting a lot of, don't know, so I, I'm not certain. They reached out to us, saying we have the additional funding, but the nucleus of when it happened, I cannot be certain. I would imagine, if I had to guess, we applied for it, just like you said, D E P didn't call us, they were gonna give you so much, and you have to match four hundred thousand, so I'm thinking, the way it was presented, it, we applied for it. But either here or there, they called, they called us and said, here's the funding, we're trying to get closed out, do you wanna do it? That's why we're rushed.
And do we know why we didn't move forward with it two years ago?
There, I was being, I was told that there was pressure from the public, they didn't, they didn't want it. And plus, we didn't have four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for a match, is the make, the main reason why we didn't take it. And then when, um, you were talking, same thing when you wanted to push the wastewater out to I seventy-five, the general, from what I understand, the general public wasn't real supportive of that. But the main reason, I'm being told that we didn't accept the grant in twenty-twenty-two, is we didn't have four hundred and fifteen for a matching. We did pay forty thousand of it. We paid forty thousand of the match when it first came out, but we never paid the other three hundred and seventy thousand, and they're, they're funding that for us.
Okay, we got this project on the books right now, supposedly, prematurely. What do we else have coming down? Do we have any other wastewater projects that we're fixing a tackle, or at least go in any direction? So it could be five years or more before the next one is proposed.
What would be the cost to the city if we don't do the impact fees? What would be, what cost would we incur?
It would not cost us anything. What you will lose is in the impact, the impact fee fund. You, we, if you charged everybody the impact fee, you would add additional roughly fifty thousand dollars, a little less, the fifty thousand dollars to the impact fee, when we have to upgrade infrastructure. And, um, that's what we lose, but it won't cost the city anything. We don't lose out, the only thing we're gonna lose out on is the forty grand we paid two, three years ago.
It, it's difficult for me to reconcile this with now knowing that we don't have industrial wastewater lines going up four forty-one. The impact of the groundwater for industrial wastewater is way more than domestic. I mean, if you, in my, in my opinion, you know, I would rather see, you know, all of the industrial corridor hooked up than forcing the residents to do it. That would be a bigger priority for me.
This grant does not cover that, correct?
No, no, it's project-specific.
This grant is very specific in what it will do and what it won't do, and it only impacts those three roads. We can't take that money and find bids and cost savings and add a fourth road. No, it's for these three roads.
Basically, the impact fee that would be taken up here is gonna cover the forty thousand we've already got invested in this project. It's gonna cover that.
So, we're on a time crunch. If we decide to do this, can we continue to talk about how we can help our citizens get through those costs? Is that, that's not something that has to be made right away, correct?
Correct.
And I'm sure we can...
This will give, if, if approved, and we move forward with it, that would give the attorney time to research more, to see if there's any, anything in the statute they could find. If we can make this optional, I would love to make it optional. But the funding, the way the grant funding is, we will lose all that money if they don't hook up. They, they pay for everything but the impact fee. The impact fee, that's up to you.
What I'm going to research, Mr. Mayor, is if the septic system has been placed in service within X period of time, you know, relatively, uh, new, that, is that an exception that we could craft in our regulations to allow an exception to the hookup fees? So that's, that's the question that I'm going to look at. The way this comes about is the statute requires hookup, S R F fund, funding, and if you get bond funding for a sewer project, typically, they say, within two hundred feet of your sewer, in, you know, you're placing the sewer lines, any property that touches within two hundred feet must hook up, because that's how you get your sewer system funded. So that, that's the genesis of how these regulations come about. But what I'll look at is, can we then have an exception, and it will apply in the future as well, so that if we have an expand, expansion of the sewer line, and somebody's just put in a brand-new septic, uh, now we'd have to be careful, as Commissioner White said, if we have a subdivision that's just all
Right.
gone in there, then, then that's a substantial situation. So, but it would apply, this exception would apply across the board to whatever situation that we had. So we, we, we have to be careful about that uniform application, but that's, that's what I'm gonna look at. And it may be that we just, it's, it's, uh, not possible to do, and I'll come back and I'll tell you that. I think what your manager said is, there's also a program where you can pay fifty-eight dollars a month over the three-year period to pay for this. So there's ways that he's trying to alleviate this, and make it as minimally invasive as possible. But we'll look at all that and come back to you with whatever we can, whatever we can come up with.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a quick question? Is there a language that says that if any of the residents in that area chose not to hook up, we allowed them not to hook up, that the grant funding would be affected? So I don't wanna say, yeah, we'll look into it, and then we come back and say, oh, we wanna waive somebody, but then we find out afterwards, we're locked into it, because the grant language is all or nothing for the money. So I, I haven't read it, that's been a long time since I've looked at it. Is there any language that you're aware of?
Everything I've read, and Danielle read the grant as well, and her opinion was, everything shows they have to hook up. And right now, without any, anything from the attorney contradicting that, that's the stance we have to take, as, as you plan on this, is if we approve this, all twenty-two houses will have, until, until we're told different, we gotta make a decision off the data we have at the time. And the data that we've got from the attorney's office is they have to hook up.
It's mentioned that any new subdivision coming on board, if we have. Well, we've already pretty much got in lined up. If a subdivision is developed, they have got to have city sewer and water, correct? We're, we're, unless
No.
we out there with that big one out there off the Hundred Forty Second Avenue. That's a little different situation, because we don't have sewer out there. But I'm saying, within the sewer ramifications that we have right now, a new development goes in, they have to hook up to our services. So we're not gonna...
If it's available, we have water available more places than we have sewer. All along four forty-one, on one whole side, you just got water. I mean, well, both sides, really. You only have sewer on the, uh, railroad. So, anything commercial that goes in, they don't have sewer, they would use a septic tank. And there's other places in the city that are like that. We just have water.
Question, let's say that's how we're gonna go with this. New subdivision goes in on four forty-one, and I know one, where one's proposed. He's right, there's no sewer out there. Same way, if we had an industrial park out there, we don't have infrastructure out there for new businesses to come into town. Is it something that we would require that development to have to pay to get that sewer system at that entrance to feed that new development? Are we able, or, and then again, you're adding a huge expense on a development at that point.
So, if it, if it can be reasonably ran, so it's close, it's reasonable that we can make the developer do it, then yes, we require a developer to lay the sewer lines and hook into our sewer. But if it's, like, the property that's way out, and it's nowhere near sewer, we're not requiring them to run three miles of sewer, no.
Right.
But if it comes up and it tees off, or however, and it's right there, yes, we would, if it's reasonable, we will require the developer to lay out sewer. Sewer is the way, the, the city's direction. We will go sewer, um, as long as it's reasonable.
So with that being said, I'm just looking out in the future. We got that coming in, and they don't have sewer, city sewer. Say, two years down the road, they gonna have to hook up. Is there any way we can have regulations or information, when the development starts, to prepare people purchasing that property? You need to be prepared that if a sewer system comes in, when you sign this agreement, you gotta take it, and there's no argument, no acceptance, or you cannot deny it. For us to protect ourselves for this same situation later on, and not put the next city board in this situation that they don't, that they've got a gut-wrenching vote that they gotta make, because that's where we're running in with this.
So when you close on a house, and there's any Please jump in, Scott. You, you sign all these documents, remember you signed, you've signed up? And if there's anything like an H O A, or a C D D, or something in there like that, that is going to be a part of the process, you have to sign a rider. You know, I understand that I will have an H O A fee and blah, blah, blah. There is no rider for possible future sewer development. There's not. Can we inform? Yes, we can find a way, work, um, work, work with the staff to find ways to inform them. But as far as an official notification, I don't see how we could do it.
I'm just trying to keep this from happening later on in the future, because you're talking about a gut-wrenching vote here tonight. That's gonna impact only twenty people, but still, we're forcing something on somebody, which we know down the road, it's gotta happen. Shame on us, it's gotta happen. We know it's coming. And eventually, we are gonna be forcing people to do it, regardless how we feel.
Mr. Mayor, what we've done in the past for that kind of situation is that we have required the developer to run the sewer line out to the development. But we have a development agreement with that, that particular developer that is, uh, it's, it's, the developer gets paid back essentially for developments that hook into the system. Now typically, those agreements only last a five-year period of time. So if you have, if you require the developer, because of the intensity of development, to, to run a line, substantive period, substantive amount of distance, and then, and then also in those agreements, we typically have the developer upsize the line so that people are able to connect in. And then you can have the new developments pay back that developer, because now all of a sudden, all these properties in the interim become highly developable. And so that pays back the developer for doing that. And we've, we've had those agreements like that in the City of High Springs and other cities that we have represented over the years. So that's kind of how that question gets answered down the road. And then after the five years, I'm sorry, developer, there's no, no additional reimbursements on, on it. But everybody knows what, what the scenario is, and the sewer system is, the wastewater system is in place in that new development, because of the requirements that we have, the intensity and density of that development.
Have we got citizen comment, since we don't have a motion on the floor yet? Do we have any citizen comment on this matter?
Good evening, everyone. Mel Campos. Um, my question, I think, is probably more for the city manager. So I understand from both you and, and Jason, that the expectation is that the state will sooner or later be requiring this? That that's the trend, that the expectation is that the state will be, this will be a requirement?
If you're asking my opinion of the direction of the state, yes.
Okay.
They haven't, they've made measures to reduce the number of, and funding to reduce the number of septic tanks. They wanna go to way, away from septic tanks where sewer is reasonable and available.
Okay, so that informs my, my real question, which is, if the City of High Springs passes on this opportunity to save the impacted residents a twenty-five, twenty-one hundred dollar impact fee now, and then the state requires that we do this, those citizens will still be on the hook for that twenty-one hundred dollar impact fee later, plus the city has to fund a one-point-four-million-dollar project?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Is there still the ten-thousand-dollar fee to hook up to the septic, or to hook up to the sewer line? On top of the impact fee, isn't there a hookup cost?
Yes.
Right?
They're to physically, and that is funded through this grant.
Which, if we remember back to, uh, previously, when we initially started the sewer system, that was not covered by the state at all. In fact, that was incurred by the citizen, which on this, it's not. So, in the future, if they run the line, they'll have to pay ten thousand, plus twenty-one hundred. So, I mean, twenty, I, and like I said, I should just shut up. I, I can't do it. Um, I'll be honest, I'm one of those twenty affected. I have no desire to pay twelve thousand, one hundred dollars to hook up to a sewer system that I know, within the next fifteen to twenty years, I can almost guarantee you, we will all be required to hook up to. I understand the, the, the thought process behind it, and, you know, none of us want anything to go up in cost. I'm a cop and a teacher here, we're not exactly rolling in it. But, you know, I, I, I see the future, and I know what we've done in the past, and what it's cost people in the past to hook up to our sewer system. And ten grand would be, be a lot to swallow, and I appreciate the fact that the city came up with the no-interest loan for the three years. That will help me and my family, I can tell you that. That will help me and my family, I can tell you that. Um. I, I get, I, I hear all the stuff. 1.8 million, this is going to happen whether we like it or not at some point. And we're already mad at the lots for, for, you know, not worrying about our water. If we turn this down, are we not doing the exact same thing, just in reverse, saying we don't care about the water? Because we'll just make, I don't know. I, I have a lot of emotion about it, but I, I don't think this is a bad idea. I don't think it's a bad thing, and I don't think it's a sneaky thing or anything like that. I think this is just kind of where we're heading in, living in a populated area like this. And, you know, High Springs has been small for a long time, but fortunately, it's growing.
Well, not only that, here we are, you mentioned the Lotchway situation with the water. Guess what runs right under there?
Yep.
Just that same situation, that water aquifer that we're talking about is running right through there, going to Coaclo. If it's not directly underneath it, it's close enough to affect.
I guess I got one last question, and this is an odd question. Instead of wavering that fee for one person, could we decrease the amount of the impact fees to 1,800 and then that would cover what we put into this project? Is that possible?
I think you'd have to decrease it across the board. And typically, when we do impact fees, we do a study. So it's, it's something that is a very involved measure because of the fact that this is a highly litigated area of, of how you do the rational test for the fee to the system as it's going to be affected in the future. It's, it's something that is, is very much studied, and we have a report that, that we look at, and then we implement the impact fees across the board. So I, I don't think we could do it for one instance. You could engage another study and, and say, is our, is our impact fee for residential appropriate at this stage? Is it gauged for, you know, what we should be collecting?
But I guess my question would be, what would be the difference between that and just wavering everybody? You still just, if you decreasing everybody that's in that particular development, I mean, that's in that area, what's the difference?
It's, it's a good question. I think the, um, I think the fairness is that somebody just put in a brand-new system, and they've spent X amount of dollars for the implementation of that system. And so there's at least a question for that one property owner, could that be exempted in that instance? And that's what I'll look at to see if there is any basis to allow for an exemption in that, in that particular scenario. Um, I, my gut tells me not, that it's not there. But I'm gonna look at it and see if there's any other jurisdictions that I can find that, that, that allow for that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, in terms of DEP and awarding grant money, I worked with DEP for many, many years. And it's highly unlikely that they will hand down an unfunded mandate. You know, if 10 years from now, 15 years from now, they say, you must abandon all septic tanks. It's not likely that they're gonna make, they're gonna stick us with the bill. So, I mean, I understand that this is money that's here now, but I'm just, down the few, down, down the line, if their regulations do change, um, it'd be pretty hard for them to force us to do it without helping to pay for it.
Any other questions, comments, a motion? Move on?
I make a motion to move forward with accepting the grant.
Are you adding to the motion for our office to research the question of exemption?
Yes, sir.
We move no second. All right, moving on. Okay, we will move on to, uh, citizen requesting comments for issues not on the agenda. Please state your name for the record, and please, 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 limit comments to five minutes. You will not be allotted any more time than that. And I would ask all the commissioners to hold all responses until we've had every citizen give their comments. Thank you. It is open now.
35 South US 441, High Springs, Florida 32643. Standing United As Americans. I can go over all three at one time and let you comment on it, or you want to do one at each thing?
Just go ahead, sir, use your whole five minutes, please.
Do it now.
Just go ahead.
Do all, all three of them now? Okay, uh, first one, the rule of the parades have been changed, and, um, we've been, um, we were being told that, uh, we don't have our sponsor anymore as the High Springs Fire Department, which they've been sponsoring us since 1998. And we've had this, um, the rideless horses and all that honoring a member of our great American heroes. The, um, the American Farmer Fire Rescue Law Enforcement Military. We go back eight generations, you wanna say it? Eight generations in this area on my mama's side, our farm. I didn't say four or five, I said eight generations. We've lived here. And, um, the old, the old timers are about gone. I'm over 70 years old. But they're being pushed out, pushed out, and none of the body people that's on that, on the board up there. The city council was here in 1998 when we started. Now, to verify that, the spokesperson for the city and the, and the fire department knows, and the new chief knows, especially the chief of police knows, the world's top chief of police in the world, there it is, that, that, um, we've, we've been doing this. So, um, we want to know about things. The next thing is I'm on the committee, a lot of big committee up there in Tallahassee. I've been up to Tallahassee. We've al, you've already got the money, you've already got the money to fix this priest theater, and it's just sitting there, y'all waiting for it to fall down, so you won't have to fix it. The money's already there. I met with five to seven representatives, five to seven senators, the top, one of the top fire marshals for the whole state of Florida, and also the governor of the state of Florida. And they approved that. And they've already given you the money, and you're just waiting for it to fall down. Okay, then on the last one. Now, uh, my mama said, son, if you didn't sit with your eyes or hear with your ears, it's hearsay. I was not there. But I know about the letter, I know about the situation and all that. It has to do with, uh, this is to the attorney, Thomas Henry. Thomas Henry did 30 years for the City of Lake City. Was voted top, top person for the whole City of Lake City, two years, in two years, for two years. He did 30 years up there. He came here, he's got like, I'll say, seven years. He liked three years, retired. Now, I know this for a fact there. You wrote a letter, you got a letter, and I've, and I've seen a copy of the letter. You said, when you came here, you would not do nothing, you would check all the employees, you would give them six months till you got to know them. You hadn't even been here four or five days, and you fired Thomas Henry. Okay? And, um, and, and he was, he had your job. And the, and the world's top chief of police had your job. If he was so bad running the, the, the city, and none of the employees, everybody got along with him, everybody got along with this man here, you know? They got along with him and all that, and he, um, he's got another job. Why can't he just finish out his three years? Y'all pay him back pay and say bye-bye? And he have his 10 years in. Everything today is about retirement.
Thank you, sir.
That's your time, we're sorry. We have to move on to the next citizen. Thank you so much.
We will at the end, just like I instructed everybody up here.
Good evening, um, mayor and commissioners. Welcome Commissioner Howell to the dais. That's, um, my first opportunity to congratulate you. Um, I'd like to say, Mr. Marshall, I continue to be impressed with your active involvement in the discussions during our meetings. This has not always been the case here in this room. And I'm so pleased that you spoke up on behalf of the residents. Um, I love the observed respectful dialogue in the discussion where the format is more conversational, respectful, and relaxed. The thorough dialogue that regarding this wastewater extension, working through both the shore and the long-term, uh, impact this is gonna have on our city. Um, I also observed the way our city employees have chimed in and added to the discussion. Kudos to the group, Merry Christmas to all the members of the, uh, dais, Mr. Marshall, and all of our city staff. Um, and thank you for continuing to improve the day-to-day operations of our city. Um, I observe it, I appreciate it, and would like to, um, acknowledge it.
Thank you so much. Any other citizen comments? Okay, we will ask for Commissioner response now. The one thing I will ask everybody is, please do not respond to the, uh, Thomas Henry thing. We cannot talk about that, we're in litigation. We have been instructed by our attorneys not to speak on that matter. But the other two issues we can speak on. So does anybody want to, uh, talk about the priest theater? We'll start with that one? Please.
So, um, we are working with Paul Strasing, the city engineer. He has just completed the structural drawings to shore up the priest theater. We prob, in the next few weeks, we'll be tearing the seats, probably a few weeks, Alan, you think? We'll be tearing the seats out, and they will come in with the scaffolding and work on the shoring up the structural part of the priest theater. Once that structural part is done, they will move on to the roof. But, um, our engineer has just finished the drawings, and those have to get approved by the state. Is that right, Ashley? The state, they have to prove it because it's a historic, um, historic building. So there's certain, um, checks that have to be done, which is, that's where we're at with it right now. Ashley, you have anything? Ashley's been kind of working hard on this. Is there anything you want to add? No? Okay.
Perfect. And then the, the fire department not sponsoring?
I have, I.
Can you call the, 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 um, city offices on Monday and let's just, well, I guess we can't do a Monday parade Saturday? Okay.
I have no idea what we're talking about, the fire department dropping sponsorship. The, the city does not run the parade, that's a Chamber of Commerce event. And the fire department will be there with their fire truck, and they'll be in the parade like they always have. I'm not aware of any changes in sponsorship, and the city does not sponsor the event, the Chamber of Commerce does.
So I think the best option would be to reach out to the Chamber of Commerce, sir, for that answer on anything with the fire, or anything, excuse me, anything with the parade. Sir, I'm sorry, you've, you've had your five minutes, I'm sorry.
Let me, let me comment on that, mayor, if it's okay. I'd like to comment on that.
Quickly, please.
I, we have worked very hard with the Chamber of Commerce, and we received many, now I understand where we're going, is we received numerous complaints, and as a committee for this parade and staff and with Sharon Decker, we, we worked with the, the police chief, and we decided for safety, of all the bystanders of the parade, any animals, one animal, one handler. We're not gonna do eight horses with one handler, it's just, it's not safe, and it's too much.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, Mr. Borders, I want to address the issue that you say nobody's on there since 1985. I've been in this community for way before that, and the mayor, I know his parents. I used to put gas in their vehicles before the man was born. So I know how long he's been here. I grew up in this town, so you can't come up here and start slamming people that we haven't been here long enough. I know exactly where you live, I used to deliver to your house. So I get kind of tired of you coming up here slamming everybody. I'm not gonna take it. So, don't, please, be respectful when you come up here addressing us, because it gets kind of old to get slammed for no reason. So I've been here, I know how old this feller is. He wasn't even born when I was pumping gas in his parents' vehicle.
That's a fact.
So, that's all I got.
I ain't never lived anywhere else. In fact, I live one street over from where I grew up. Right? We, we all have a lot of love for this town, and I appreciate those comments, uh, Commissioner Bloodworth, I really do. Okay, moving on to new business. We're gonna discuss, consider, and act on dismissal of lien on tax parcel 01121-000-000.
This one, this is a lien exemption, where we're asking to, uh, release the lien. The summary shows a $16,500 amount. Um, two reasons. One, this goes back to, it looks like February 20th, 2006. The owner of the property, Grace McNeil, apparently had some code enforcement action against her property. I do not know if it was homestead property or not. If it was, potentially the lien did not attach. We can still issue the lien, but if it's homestead, it doesn't attach to that property. Um, but for clarification, uh, there's probably some title issues as a result of the lien being on the title. And the new owner, um, Mr. Dershowitz, I believe it is, is closed on the property and was not informed about the lien when he, um, obtained ownership of the property, came to get a permit to work on the house and the property, and apparently at that time was denied the permit because of the lien that was there. So he's asking, can this lien be extinguished? The only way to extinguish the lien is through this board, so that's why it's coming before you. I will say that having been the attorney to your code enforcement board for years now, the objective that you have is not to collect money from the property owners, it's to get the properties in shape and in code and clean up the neighborhood, whatever is going on there. So based upon the summary, it would appear that Mr. Dershowitz is, is seeking to get this, get the situation rectified on that property, which is the objective.
Yes, sir, that's, that's exactly how it was explained to me too, and I don't think that if he purchased this piece of property thinking it was lien-free and then moves in there. God, can you imagine the call, no, you, you can't do that, you owe $70,000 on something that was supposed to be looked at? Yeah, I don't think that's right.
And a key point is this lien is 18 years old, and liens expire at 20 years. We got like 18 months or something like that until this expires, and it's not of any fault of the new owner.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we really, we dismiss this lien, given the fact that the new property owner obviously is trying to pull permits to improve the property, and that's the ultimate goal.
Second.
It's been properly moved. And second, do we? Do we have any citizen comment on this? Okay, properly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Unanimous. That was an easy one right there. Ooh. All right, discuss, consider and act on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh nine.
Mr. Mayor, this is an ordinance of the City of High Springs, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of High Springs, Article Five, Boards, Commissions and Authorities, Division Seven, which is the Mayor's Youth Council, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing effective date. Appropriate motion is passed, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero nine, upon its reading by title only.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is your youth council. For all those who haven't, not familiar with youth councils, you should come attend one of their meetings. Brilliant, brilliant young men and women. They are on the same term, um, limit, or not term, but the, the dates of their terms are with the rest of your boards. It, the youth council is, doesn't make sense to them. Because they're requesting it go by their school year, cuz you have some seniors right now that are on the board and they're gonna graduate before their term is up. And it just doesn't make sense for that board. And they're requesting that you alter their term dates to coincide with the school year for them to better flow, flow through.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh nine.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any citizen comment on this? And I will say before we vote that this is a very impressive group and continue to impress, so, like you did a good job shipping them, getting them, whipping them into shape over the last year, but, uh, those kids are extremely impressive. So with that in mind, uh, it's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor? Oh, it's an ordinance. See? Thank you. Between those, I would make it through.
Commissioner Bloodsworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Howell?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Mayor Grunder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, moving on to, uh, new business item three. Discuss, consider and act on site for Pediatrics Clinic Expansion. How are you, sir?
EDA Consultants, good evening. Uh, thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm here with Claudia Vega, my colleague. She's the engineer that put this, um, site plan together for you. Um, just a few comments and we can answer any questions that you have. This is the, um, High Springs Pediatrics and Primary Care, one of your local small businesses that's helping keep your, um, community healthy. Uh, we've been working with them to try to, um, expand, um, the area they've got to do business out there. Uh, another two thousand square foot building on their property, uh, along US four forty-one. If you're familiar with that site, um, they've got their existing, um, office building and parking lot and there's sort of a grass field there, um, between that and four forty-one. So they'd like to put, um, uh, a second building for their, um, medical office use on that, um, area. There's a landscape plan that has been put in. Um, there's a stormwater, um, area that's been provided and approved by the Water Management District to handle all the stormwater runoff and treatment. Uh, we've added some parking spaces. Um, there's an old dormant, uh, sinkhole that's in the back of the property and so that was surveyed and the, um, fifty-foot natural buffer has been provided at the top of the sinkhole to protect that area. We're connecting to city water and sewer and so all of that's been reviewed. Um, and your staff has, um, given us some comments and we've addressed all those. And so we've, we've got a plan here tonight that has, um, addressed all the city review comments and the Planning and Zoning Board, um, has also recommended approval for you tonight. Um, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions if you might have any. Thank you.
Do we have any questions or comments from the commission?
I just wanna say, when I saw this on the agenda, I was actually excited because it's good to see that a business is doing so great in town that you need a expansion. Um, so that's a good thing to hear.
They're, they're, they're excited about the opportunity as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask one question about the existing sinkhole? Is there growth in the sinkhole? Are there trees in the sinkhole?
Yeah, it's highly vegetated. It's very, very much dormant.
So that would indicate it's fairly stable.
Absolutely. It's been there for a very long time.
Okay.
Longer than any of you out there. I think I can say that. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the site plan as presented.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we have any public comment? Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Great, thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
Good to see you, Clay.
You too. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to new business item four. Discuss, consider and act on potential dates for the Bridlewood CDD ordinance.
Good evening. So you guys saw the Bridlewood CDD previously. You tabled it until we had a workshop. We've had the workshop now, so we want to kinda iron out the details on when it's gonna come back to you. The applicant has requested February, so if you're good with that, we'll go with that cuz we do need a full month for advertising.
Place it in February?
I make a motion that we move it to February.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Anybody would like to comment on that? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Boom, February. We're cooking. We are cooking. Okay. Let me find the paper I wrote on. Moving on to new business item five. Discuss, consider and act on resolution twenty twenty-four dash CC regarding the post office ground lease extension agreement.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and read this by title only. This is a resolution of the city, commission of the City of High Springs approving the ground lease extension agreement between the City of High Springs, as less were, and Southeast Postal Building Corporation, as less see, for certain premises located at twenty-three six eighty-seven Northwest one hundred and eighty-eighth Avenue, High Springs, Florida, three two six four three. Authorizing the mayor of the City of High Springs to execute the agreement on behalf of the City of High Springs, providing for conflicts, providing an effective date. Appropriate motion is passed or, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash CC as read by title only.
And as I understand it, this is coming up, right? This is like this month?
Mm-hmm.
Like not a date this month?
So what you have is this lease in front of you. We own the land that the post office is on and when it was built after a certain timeframe, uh, it reverts to us, so we will own the post office. When they, when the commission originally approved the land lease, there was a period of time of two years between the building, when the land lease was there and the building was built. And this is back in the eighties, I believe. And we sent all this to the attorney's office in Danielle and their attorney went back and forth on how the language was about the two-year extension. And it's Danielle's opinion that they will fight that two years and it would cost us more in court than what we're gonna get. So what we've done, what she's recommended is extending the lease of the post office for the two years. And when that two years is up, we own the post office. So in about a year from now, we will be having a conversation of what we're gonna do with that post office, cuz they have an option to purchase. Purchase it. Um, that, that amount's already been set. The person that leases, uh, that owns the building has also made an offer, but the post office has a first right of refusal. We could take that or we could take the building and do whatever we want. This, this in front of you extends their lease to cover that two-year gap in the beginning. That was done under the advice of Danielle.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask a question, please? So we currently own the land.
Correct.
But not the building.
Correct.
Two years from now, we'll own the land and the building.
Correct.
The possible scenarios are, we retain ownership and it stays a post office? Or in order to stay a post office, we would have to sell it to the United States Postal Service?
We would have to sell it or come up with a new lease.
Okay, okay. Cuz I, I just am very hesitant to do, do anything that's gonna make the post office not be here in High Springs, so.
So we've already been talking, I've been talking to the postmaster general over there and kept him abreast of what's going on and then this, this will kinda close that up. But we would never, at least while I'm here, we will never go and say, we're taking ownership, you got three months to get out and that affects the whole city. We will probably about a year from now have a conversation, what is the post office intention? Do you wanna buy it? Yes or no? And it, they, they may not. It's an older building. Um, I know they've already talked about putting a new build. It's one of the things they said that is discussed, discussed was get appropriations to put a new builder, uh, bigger post office, since they've outgrown that. So they, but they have first chance to buy it. If they don't, the person that owns the building has made a pretty decent offer. Or do we keep the building? There are some, I, I, there's some options that we could do with that building. Um, but it's, that's really something for us to start the conversation of what we wanna do with that. But we got, this will give them two years to start planning.
I couldn't agree more with Commissioner White. We need to keep the post office in High Springs. That was a huge thing when it came and people have been using it like crazy every so long.
I don't think, from talking to postmaster general, I don't think they're talking about doing away with the post office. I think they're talking about maybe doing a new building or a new location within High Springs. That's, that's the attack.
Which I would be fine with. I just, I know that down in Newberry, they were talking about potentially closing that, that post office down and it's just, it's very much a part of the identity.
Yeah.
And going into Gainesville to go to the post office, I get that centralizing their, their operations is cheaper for them, but there's a lot about going to your own local post office, so. Well, I, I'm in favor, Mr. Mayor. If I could make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash CC to extend the lease another two years to give us time to, uh, plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Would anybody from the audience like to speak on this? Okay, we don't do a resolution with the, we do. Boom, see that? Look at that, I'm getting it.
Commissioner Howell?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Mayor Grunder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Bloodsworth?
Yes.
Moving on to new business item six. Discuss, consider and act on obligating ARPA funds.
So what you're gonna see is we have the ARPA funds and we are required to obligate where these funds are gonna go. So this isn't just a placeholder. This is how do we intend to spend the rest of these funds? And we, um, we have to have this approved by the end of the month. So what we've done is I've talked with every department head, Diane, sorry. Diane has talked to every department head to say, what is it that your department needs that we have put off and put off because we just don't have the funds to do it? And we sat down as, um, a group today before this meeting and we prioritize this to show you what's on there. I will say in transparency, last meeting, you guys approved the, the fire truck and you were gonna finance it. I'm still showing that as an option because the, um, the criteria that we've set forth is the goals of the city. One, my goal is this year to have a five-year capital improvement plan. The city, we have vehicles, buildings, infrastructure that needs to be funded and we have no plan. So when the fire truck came up, we were spinning our wheels, how are we going to do this? A five-year capital improvement plan will help you better plan for the capital expenditures, expenditures we need to run the city. Also, what is it that puts us in a better position, not only next year, three years, five years, ten years? How do we put ourselves in a better position? And lastly, how can we reduce recurring expenses? So that's how we wait it out. So what Diane's gonna propose to you, I'll back to what I was saying, is you guys approve the fire truck. I put that as priority number one, just because in, I'm not heartbroken if you guys don't like it, I wanted to put it in there as an option because it lowers the, um, amount of debt that we have. We will just pay for the fire truck and it would be done. If you don't do that, we have a couple others that we can give suggestions, but we need to spend seven hundred and thirty-seven, or not spend, obligate this money. I wanna reiterate this and I, I'm doing it cuz I know Diane will want me to, is this isn't a wish list. This isn't, oh, we think we're gonna do this. This is how we intend. We are gonna be held to what, what we spend this on. So we're open to the conversations. So go ahead, Diane. So this is the spending, I'll, I'll let Diane do this.
You're fine. You're doing great.
Okay. So this is what you have spent ARPA on from the beginning. One, um, facilities, the roof, the elevator, lift stations, the generators, the getting ready. There's a list of what you have spent it on. This has all put us in better positions for services and I, as you see, a couple vehicles. We replaced the chief, the PIO and the Public Works Director, vehicles, trying to lower recurring expenses. And now in here, you will see some vehicles. This will help put us in a better position to formulate a five-year capital improvement plan. Any questions on the spending so far? Okay, moving on. So there's your ARPA funding, how much we got, how much we've spent. We've already committed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the mold remediation over at the fire department. Checked with the fire chief today. We are expected to be on budget. We got some bids coming in for the HVAC. That's the big one that if anything is gonna blow that budget, it's gonna be the HVAC. We're waiting for the bid to come back, but we feel that we will be on budget for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. During our budget, uh, hearings, um, during the budgets part, we took a hundred and fifty thousand and we put it into a city manager contingency for Commissioner Howell, who wasn't here for that. We cut the budget and we made it so lean that if something went wrong, we had no way to really, we, we really just cut the budget. So this gives me a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to meet unexpected things that arise. Um, also with it, we didn't budget, for example, we didn't budget for somebody to go to paramedic school, but we have a firefighter that says, I would really like to go to paramedic school. I'm paying for that out of that contingency. This is the kinda stuff that if I could see the benefit, I can, I have the flexibility up to twenty-five thousand dollars to spend on the contingency. So that brings us down to seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. The proposed ARPA funds, I'm, I can go through them quickly, um, but the staff's here, we're ready to answer any questions and show, tell you why we ranked things the way we did. So the fire truck, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Um, Christie's been honest about the land development code. We have made changes to the land development code and we are required to do a land development code update. We are going to get in trouble from the state for not having an updated land development code. We've, uh, reached out, it's about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to update this land development code.
Who would do that for us, if I could ask, please?
Who's the contractor, you remember?
Most likely we'll use Allison, who did our comp plan.
Allison?
Allison McGrath.
Is that something that we could potentially get an RFP out for? Cuz Clay, who was just here, would he be somebody who could also do that?
Yes, and we also have a continuing services contract with him as well, so we could shop around. She was the one I originally talked to though.
Right.
That gave me kind of a ballpark because she worked on the comp plan.
So, so we would put it out, something that big, we would put out for an RFP. We reach out to Ms. McGrath because she's done for it and she was able to give us estimates so we could obligate the funds. Jason, two, uh, two lift stations, um, that need to get refurbished, we refurbished two, two years ago?
Uh, we refurbished one two years ago.
Two years ago. Two of them need to get refurbished, um-
What's involved in that?
Sorry.
Jason, what's involved, what's involved with the refurbishment? I'm sorry, Diane.
Repiping them, uh, they're gonna put up a, basically a quick connect for us to, if it has issues, to put our bypass pump on.
Mm-hmm.
Um, everything inside is gonna be redone, the rails, the pipe, and we've already replaced the pumps. So two years ago, we did the main lift. When they put in the city, the city sewer system- When they put in the city, the city sewer system in the first place, there was three lift stations they put on first phase. Your main lift, you got Plantation Oaks, and then you have the High Springs Community School. Now, the other two left are Plantation Oaks and High Springs Community School, and they're in bad shape. And they need the same lift that the main lift got.
I've heard those are rough.
Yeah, they're very rough, yeah.
The next, thank you, Jason. The next thing that's on there is putting bulletproof glass at the police department at the front desk. If you go to the police department, you'll notice you have to ring a doorbell. Eventually, somebody will, I'm just kidding, chief. Somebody will come get you, escort you in. That is not good customer service, but we have Angie that's kind of the reception. And we got to worry about her security. We don't know what's walking into that police station. Chief has asked for this for past years and I think it will make the police department more accessible, more user friendly while keeping our staff safe. Number five is a skater communication systems for the lift station. So what this is, is if a lift station goes down, it sounds an alarm, but nobody will know it until they drive by, hear the alarm, call public works and go through.
I called you.
Yes.
You remember?
Yes. So this here will allow the operators to have an alert as soon as it goes down. And there's, this allows communication and they can turn, they can control, they can shut everything down, everything remotely to get, before we can get out there to get to work. Couple small items, they need a hardtop for their line locator truck to protect equipment. It's just sitting in the back. Um, it, it's just 3,500 bucks to throw a camper top on top of it. Um. Grading and reseeding the fields at the sports complex to make it tournament ready. We are going to put bids out there. Jennifer Appleby has been working with all the organizations to bring tournaments to High Springs. This will generate revenue, um, through the use of the fields, but to be competitive for these bids, the back, the, um, the fields or the sports, sports complex need to be graded and reseeded. Parks and Rec needs a roller tiller. The Civic Center needs a warming oven. We, we knew that when we built it. Parks and Rec, their mowers are junk. They're, they're, as you may remember, when you used to sign checks and you just signed a bunch today. And maintenance on these mowers, we're just piecemeal on these things together. So we're going to buy one, use, let the other one, when it dies, 18 months, we'll buy another one for 8,000. Next slide, Diane. Or Kevin. Replacement vehicle for the Parks and Rec director. This one, I thought of you, Wayne. Wayne, um, or sorry, Commissioner Bloodsworth. If you've seen our Parks and Rec director, she's driving around in a 1999 Mazda that it does the job. We can do better.
The tailgate doesn't open.
It does, no, it's, it's, it's. Yeah, it's a stick too, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Replacement vehicle for our custodian, uh, staff. So Jacob Allagood is our, uh, cleaner. He drives around in a old Caprice that was part of the police department. It is in rough shape. We're talking about getting him a used, we, we're actually going to pull him in and let him give us the feedback on what kind of vehicle he needs. But we're going to budget 10 grand to get him a vehicle to get around from the building. It doesn't have to be anything nice, it's just going from building to building, but that car is on its last leg. Red dot technology for firearms, it's a new sighting system, um.
Is that for the pistols, chief?
And includes the holsters as well.
I carry one at work, I'll tell you, it's a game changer.
Oh, yeah.
It's a game changer.
With the way you shoot, the way I heard you shoot.
Like, I'm going to trust a military guy who can shake his beretta and it falls apart and tell me how I shoot.
You don't train enough, do you?
Yeah.
Good lord.
I could make that shot, don't worry.
New, new chairs. So if you go down by finance, it used to be an office that nobody used. We kind of turned that into a conference room and we haven't really been meeting in there. The furniture is just, it's not good. Uh, the front counter needs new furniture and up in my in the Angela suite. If you sit down in the chair across my desk, as Chief Peters does often, you almost fall over backwards. The back of that chair is falling off. So we, we put in $5,000 for new chairs for the conference room front counter in the suite. Chief, uh, is requesting the purchase of three SRO vehicles. We're going to use ARPA's funding and then, well, we're requesting ARPA funding and Red Speed. The Red Speed is done phenomenal. Remember when we were going through the budget, I asked that, I didn't put any Red Speed in there and then we needed 30,000. I was hesitant. We've made that and then some. That Red Speed is, it's working. Hopefully it's working, hopefully people are slowing down. We won't get as much money because that's what the intent is, but we could purchase three SRO vehicles. So we go through our vehicles every four to five years, but the SRO vehicles, they don't get ran on like the patrol. They're not going to be set up for the patrol. So this vehicle will last nine to 10 years. And, um, so that will save us, that will help start the capital improvement process of vehicles over at the police department. And lastly, Amy's not here, but we've talked about, Amy wants to, with the CRA, to put parking down by where the water tower is. We own all that property, it's an old buildings of, the building may stay, but she wants to put in nice parking. Parking is an issue downtown and that's what the CRA is there to do it. Um, there is grants out there, but we're not positioned good for the grants because we have no studies to back up the request and show the needs. So we're putting, we've made a arbitrary number, this, the number you see 47, 294 is just to make the ARPA money balance. We will use CRA funds, uh, to help cover whatever the study is, but this will put us in a position where Amy and I can write grants and try and save the CRA money and put that parking, which is badly needed downtown. These are the priority lists and if, if accepted and we're up for discussion, we'll co, obligate the 737,000 that we have. Now, I, I know you, we brought, talked about the fire truck for ARPA and I'm not sold on it. It's whatever you want to do. If you want to finance it, that's fine. We have some alternative projects that we can, uh, propose to eat up that 125,000. Or if you want to pay cash for the truck, then that's good. Um, ones that didn't make the priority ranking, go ahead, Kevin. New carpet, paint, tables and chairs over at the Santa Fe. We rent that space out, that space is, it's, it needs a refresh. Um, we actually cleaned out a storage area, Jason, I think, cleaned out a storage area and they found a whole room we didn't know about. Can I have that room? It's, and it's big. So that is an, um, we're looking at historical building grants to refresh it because I believe it's under a historical building. But, um, 25 grands, what we estimated, what it would cost to refresh the old school. If you don't do the fire truck, public, public works has really requested this excavator vacuum trailer. So I'll let Jason speak on that in a minute. Um, come on up, Jason. Public, public works, street millings, this is about how much it would cost us for a year's worth of street millings. We could have them dump, it's nine truckloads, I think, Jason, nine truckloads of millings?
30.
30 truckloads, sorry.
I've heard of six before.
Yeah. And then lastly, I said, give me a wish list and they put a crane truck on there to help pick up the grinders, the train, the crane that we have. When they do the maintenance for the grinders, they pick the grinder up.
The lift station pumps, yeah.
Or lift pumps, I'm sorry, not the grinders, the lift pumps. The crane that we have is too small. It, it's putting us in a bad position. But the sewer, the one on here I support the most is the, the vacuum trailer. When they go to fix a line, instead of excavating and hitting that line further with the excavator, this thing is a pressure washer. I learned this today, I, I learned it. The pressure washer and it sprays it up and vacuums the dirt and it can get right down to the line. So instead of digging up this whole area on the side of the road, it's a, if they know where the valve, it's a two by two and they just does, it is a lot safer for our public works. So it's a couple things, did I sum that up good, Jason?
Perfect.
I.
Sounds like big kid toys, that sounds cool.
It's a toy.
So you have some options.
Let's see, because you, what's that sound? Let's see, because you just, you went past.
No, that's the millage, that's the 30 truckloads.
The millage, the milling street, yeah. Thanks, Jason.
So I, I have a question for Jason, if it's time for me to ask that.
Jason.
I've talked to some of your workers and I've heard about the excavator vacuum trailer and the 550. I'm on board more with the 550 than the vac, excavator because of the safetiness of pulling those pumps out of that hole. But in your judgment, I'm sure you probably use both of them, correct? Or which would be worse, you, you want better is the excavator?
That would, we'd use that a lot more. I mean, we definitely use the other one, but this would be better if I had to choose between.
The vacuum trailer?
The vacuum trailer.
Let me ask you this, because I'm all about working safe and having our people with safe equipment. I don't want to go out here and start purchasing vehicles, but I know what that 550 is compared to what they have right now.
We don't have a 550 right now? We got the smaller one, which we don't pull up those lift pumps with that anymore. We use the company if we have to. They'll come out.
Well, that's where I was going to go. If we had to finance the fire truck versus if we decided to go with this 550, would we have a different rate since this is not an emergency vehicle versus an emergency vehicle? Anybody have any?
The interest rates?
Yeah.
I don't believe they would be different, um, due to that designation.
Uh, I think we're operating, the truck we have right now is just getting us by. Uh, I don't remember what year it is, but I've talked to somebody with that and can tell you right now, if we're going to continue moving on, sir?
2015.
So we're a 10-year vehicle, getting there.
So what we need to do is, let's go back a couple slides, Kevin.
Um, how, do you know how much we spend renting the heavy crane to do the lift station maintenance?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Old park even? I don't know either, but, um, because I was just going to say, because we're looking at a five-year plan, I'm not saying no, I'm just throwing it out there, that it may be cost effective for a couple of years to pay a third party to use theirs to do that maintenance. And again, I don't, I don't know what I'm talking about, I'm just throwing it out there. Um, and then build that into our five-year plan. Just another option, but I just don't know the answer to that. You know the name of the vendor?
Um, Hydra Services.
Oh, okay. Thank you, sorry.
So, so what you have here is how myself and the staff prioritized what we're requesting to obligate the ARPA's funds. Just because it's not on this list doesn't mean we can't do it. So if you have an idea as a commission, we're open to any suggestions. We're just, this is what we, as a staff, are saying would put us in a better position. Um, so Diane has her spreadsheet. As you guys say, right Diane? Okay. As you guys say yes or no to these, we will keep a running tally and tell you where we're at. So let's, um, what I'm suggesting is let's go through your list and let's talk about it, yes, no. If we want to obligate the funds to that, so we know how much we have to work with for the end projects. So the big one is what do you, what do you want to do with the fire truck? I just want to bring it up for discussion and let it go however you want.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, anything we can do to reduce our debt burden is a win for me. I don't like paying interest on anything. May I ask a quick question before we go down this line, Mr. Mayor, sir?
Oh, please, please, please.
Um, there's something that's not on here that came into my mind, um, in terms of a need. Out at the sports complex, the pavilion that they use to cook food and to serve all of these kids who are coming needs a new roof badly. It has a huge hole in the roof. There's no water and there's no power at that pavilion. That would be a little bit more expensive, but re-roofing that pavilion, I think should be a priority.
Could we use Wild Spaces Public Places money for that?
Maybe.
I bet, I, I bet we could do that. Because that's in, that's in the middle of a park, right?
Diane's grimacing.
It's a little bit gray because the pavilion was not built with the 2023 tranche of money. And the maintenance is intended to be on items purchased with that tranche of money. So because it wasn't, you're doing maintenance on something outside of the Wild Spaces program, so to speak. Um. So it's not, it's not a absolutely yes, let's go, if that makes sense.
Could we look into that?
Absolutely, yes.
Could we use new money coming in to do something to address that or I'm not quite understanding?
The new money is to expand your park space.
Okay.
To make new usable areas or to purchase additional property. And then once you do that with the new money, you can maintain it. So this would just be maintaining something we've had versus increasing our available land and parks and space.
What other pots of money might be appropriate for that kind of an expenditure?
Off the top of my head, I don't think we have any other because infrastructure, um, impact fees are all designated for different uses, local option gas tax. Because these are some of the things that we looked at to combine with the ARPA money. Um, so I don't want to say no, but, you know, I'm 99% sure that, given the spirit of the way it's written, that it's not, it wouldn't be for that. That doesn't mean we can't move something out and do that instead.
Jason Allen, you guys got any idea what a roof on that would cost? Just so we could put a number in?
We, they had it, somebody had a bid because we went out and looked at it. I don't know who called who's come and looked at it, but it was probably 15,000 because there's a lot of wood rot too. So all the woods got to come off and be replaced also.
So if the commission wants, we could put, I'm sure that bid's gone up now since, you know, everything, the inflation. So if we put 20,000, if the commission wants to fund that project, we could put 20,000 in there and we'll take 20,000 out of something else.
Could we, could we replace two SRO vehicles instead of all three as a, as a compromise? Or would that, would that cause dissension amongst the SROs?
It wouldn't cause, I don't think it'd cause, they're all professionals. I don't think it'd cause, chief, jump in if you want, but I would like to buy all three. That's what's going to help the police department, which will be big, one of the biggest capital expenditure departments. Get onto that five-year plan. We don't have to worry about SRO vehicles. Um, but I'll let chief.
Yeah, I think it's best to stick with the three, not because of, you know, one officer not receiving them, but we, uh, we transition cars. So, um, we have a plan of this vehicle being replaced. Like, we have several spare cars that are 2012s and 2013s that are sitting there. So we're trying to get those cars off our, our books and then we replace, uh, some of the cars that the SROs are in now and push them down. So it's, we have something like a plan in place to try to keep up with our vehicles.
Chief, could we use 20,000 of Red Speed to do that trade-off? So we do the pavilion roof and then you've already, I, no, I know, it's okay, it's okay to say no. I'm just throwing it out there because we've been dealing with these pots of money. Um, and I'm not saying your line is the only line, I just know we have an alternative funding source, source there.
The general funds that we're using, 30,000 of that, and then you're adding on, um, additional 30,000. And we really want to try to build that fund up.
That's totally fine, we can, we can look at another place.
So let's, let's go through and there's your top 10. Let's, let's discuss it. What do you guys like, what don't you like? Let's move, let's move things around.
I guess.
Go ahead.
I think that, I agree, I, I wish there was more money we could pay off the fire truck, but if we were to stay with that, even pay some down on it and finance other, another part of it, you could do the excavator trailer and the roof and maybe have some more somewhere else, I, I don't know. I agree, I kind of, yeah, we talked about not using ARPA for fire truck.
We did and you did and you said you didn't, but when we came this up, I wanted to please put this as another option just for you because it reduces our debt load. I'm okay with financing that truck, it's just.
I've, I've been out there on.
Sorry, no, I was just going to say real quickly, it also eliminates an ongoing expense in the fire department each year for the next five years. That, that's one of the things that I really look at is focusing on cutting down recurring expenses going forward. Just giving my perspective, not go either way.
I'm just thinking all the time, I'm, part of, part of me is thinking that all the times last year that people came in here and busted water lines and we had to stop and boil water and everything else, this would fix all of that, wouldn't it, Jason?
No.
Lie to me, dang gum.
Not your boiled water.
Well, I'm saying when they bust the line and you have to boil the water. If they're busting, because they were in there drilling and busting the line.
It's not Jason busting the lines, it's other people.
But I'm thinking if something like this, we don't run into us doing. No, but I'm thinking if something like this, we don't run into us doing it ourselves. Good note, I don't even mind saying that Cox Cable did a great job of busting our freaking water lines.
Any more feelings on the fire truck? It's, I'm hearing is, let's finance the fire truck.
Maybe even part of it, but I mean.
Even if we took what?
I really like the idea of paying it off, I really.
I love it.
I, I, I gotta, I always gotta remind, remind myself, this isn't my personal, this is city and they run differently than I run my personal.
Did we pay the light duty out of your contingency fund? I can't remember, where did we get that money from?
Is that out of my contingency? Yeah.
I, I thought that's what we decided we were doing with that, and we've already paid cash for that, it's done. Yeah, sweet.
What we could do too is, I, I guess I spoke a little early, um, some of the commissioners are saying they're for paying off the fire truck. If you want this excavator, um, vacuum trailer, we can look at financing that. It's eighty-five thousand.
You're robbing Peter to pay Paul with interest.
It's just, it's just, which one do you want to finance? Or we could take a look and cut some of these down and come up with the money for that vacuum trailer. We can, we can come up with eighty, we can look at other stuff, I mean, go back another slide there, Kevin. Some of these lower, I would really like to see that city park study done, I like to see the, uh, some of these other things. We can, that Parks and Rec vehicle, that will last another year.
I wanted, I actually wanted to ask about that. Um, does she need thirty thousand for a new one, if you're gonna give the custodian a ten thousand dollar one, can she not get a twenty thousand dollar vehicle?
What I did was price out, we just bought the Ford Ranger for Jason, so we just said another Ford Ranger costs thirty thousand. That's, that's the number we proposed, we would probably get her something like a Ford Ranger. But we can look at used vehicles, absolutely.
And the CRA parking study, CRA does have money, so it, again, just letting you know, we have an alternative funding source for that, it just makes it maybe a little bit longer until you can implement it. But those studies don't get done overnight either. One of the things that really they, that, um, the treasury focuses on is shovel-ready projects. Obviously, these aren't projects and it doesn't relate, but they want things that you are committed to now. So we have a lot of things that we're going out to bid for, where that's pushing us outside that parameter a little bit, which is why, like the fire truck, to me, that was an easy one. It's ready to go, we write a check, we're done, we've obligated it, we can't lose it because we used it. So that's part of my thinking. Again, that's only one perspective.
So we could take twenty thousand dollars out of the parking study and do the pavilion at the park?
If that's something you want to do, absolutely.
Because if we're talking about doing tournaments and stuff out there.
Yeah, you're gonna need that.
You're gonna need something.
And it, it is embarrassing, we got a great facility out there, it is embarrassing, you go out there and there's a.
Right now, it's a liability. A nice sponsor, a nice sponsorship banner. I like where your heads are.
Yeah, I think you'd get some, I think you could get a couple of them guys come together and I think it could get covered.
Well, I can tell you also, being out there doing the pancake breakfast and all, it's embarrassing with the roof, but then you got Jennifer showing up in that old Mazda truck.
That's true, that's true.
That don't look too good, guys, I can tell you. It don't look good. So I'm okay with getting her a vehicle, I see that little red truck beating up and down the road every day.
I know it hurts you, that's why we put it in there.
Yeah.
So let's, let's compromise, let's lower the truck to twenty thousand, we can get her a good used Ford.
Well, are we able to find, like we did with the, the light duty fire truck in municipality organizations, that somebody has one of those, that's very nice?
So what you'll do tonight is say, Jeremy, we'll let you spend up to twenty thousand dollars. And then what we'll do is, we'll go out and we'll find the best truck we can for twenty thousand dollars and purchase it wherever.
Can we add funds to that? I mean, if we wanted to add some of the general fund budget for parks, or we can do, you know, that's within.
Well, what about this land development? That's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, that's some serious money there, is that?
Gotta do it.
And that's what it's running, huh?
That is, gotta do it.
We might get lucky if they come in lower, I mean, what would happen then with that money if it came in lower? If we have a project, you know, we have, you know, a hundred and eighty for this, it comes in, they say, we'll do it for a hundred and fifty-five, because we love y'all and y'all pretty, because I get that a lot.
We'd roll that into another project. Um, again, it goes back to intent and spirit, we're giving the best estimates we can, obviously, they're not going to be exact.
Right.
So that would just be rolled into another.
So we couldn't possibly throw on like a, a seventeen, and if these things all come under budget, that money rolls down to that. And that way, it's just taken care of and it doesn't have to be thrown back in front of us. I don't get that often, so make sure I don't need to clip that.
It's recorded, it's recorded.
Play it for my wife later.
Let's say, let's pay the fire truck off, guys, I'm, I'm in favor of getting rid of that sucker.
I can go with that, I can, I'm comfortable enough with that. I'd love to not have one.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one question about these two vehicles here for Parks and Rec and custodial staff? If we, if we authorize spending the money tonight, is there anything that would keep you from buying vehicles before the end of the year? Because these places want to sell their stuff before December thirtieth.
We could, yeah, if we have the money, we could, we.
This is when they would.
We, we will find out, so if you authorize me twenty thousand, I'm not gonna be offering a new vehicle for twenty thousand.
Right.
It doesn't matter when we buy it.
Right.
But if you authorize the thirty thousand, you say, okay, we want Jennifer to have a new Ford Ranger, we will go out Monday, we'll call Santa Fe Ford or whoever, and, um, see what the best rate they can give us is.
You could get a decent one-year, two-year fleet vehicle from Southeast Cars in Gainesville, they have great stuff there.
Yeah, but we're gonna look at every option, just trying to obligate the money, it's not so much, we don't need to get hung up so much on the item itself.
Right.
It's the money.
Right.
Where do you want to put the money?
Okay.
So to help to facilitate this a little better, look at the top ten, Kevin, you go back to top ten for me, please. We already disagreed, the fire truck, so that's there, and I'm telling you from bottom of my heart, we have to do the land development, oh, that's my, that's number two. We really can't mess out on that. Is there anything in that top ten that anybody does not feel that's a priority? Except for eight, nine, there's, that's gonna come up to three thousand dollars, we put that in there to keep Jennifer happy, she's got walking pneumonia, I need to make her smile, so I got her, I got her, uh, rototiller.
I like it. A woman after my own heart, I like it.
Is there anything in the top ten that anybody wants to move around? Because we are completely open and staff is not gonna be hurt anyway.
Good for all of them.
I like them all.
Let's go to the next sheet, Kevin. Thank you, Kevin. This is, rounds out your total now, we can go, um, this will round out your total.
Let's, I'm with, I'm with dropping the Parks and Rec director vehicle to twenty, and if we needed to come up to twenty-five, we could, I think we could do that out of her budget. Do we like that? Do we, how do we feel about that?
And can we drop the, the parking study, um, down since CRA, since CRA does have money? So that we could free up some, if, I mean, if, if obviously this, um, I like, the trailer is important to me. The sewer and water, uh, vacuum trailer. If we could free up some of the funds here from Jennifer's new vehicle and the park study to at least put a fifty percent down payment on that, then we would finance very little, because I think that piece of equipment's important.
I agree, I agree with Commissioner White's a hundred percent.
Okay, run it, Commissioner White's, just to clarify it my head, run that by me one more time.
Drop the twenty down, Jennifer's down to twenty grand. Talk about bumping the amount down for the park, the city parking study, because CRA does have money. So that we could put a roof, if we had twenty grand for a roof for the new, or for the, um, sports complex, and then put a decent down payment down on the excavator vacuum trailer. Because we would still, we would still finance some, but much less in the fire truck.
Let me run this idea by you, it sounds like this roof is pretty important, and I agree.
It's not critic, it's, it's embarrassing.
Yeah, it's embarrassing.
And it's also dangerous.
So let's do this, let's find a way to make the vacuum trailer a reality. If we don't have enough money for the roof, we will let Alan have his shot at trying to get a sponsor for it. If that doesn't work, I'll take it out of my contingency.
Done.
I think Alan gets it done.
Look at you, Alan, solving problems and being part of the solution.
Another thing we could do is, we have two mowers in there for Parks and Rec, we could do one. It's only four thousand dollars, but we can chip away, because we're only fifty-one thousand off right now. With the four, if we take out the four thousand, we're fifty-five thousand off, so if we took the mowers down to four, and.
When you say fifty-five off, do you have the trailer in there, the vacuum trailer in there?
With the trailer in it, yes.
Okay, and not.
Because we cut down, so, and if we took the parking study out, meaning not funded with ARPA, that would get us where we're within twenty-three thousand seven hundred and six.
Hey, Alan, how much trouble you think it'd be just to patch that hole far as going in and cutting, it's not worth it?
Nah, it's a mess.
I mean, I, I was there working, but it can be temporary patch to fill up a hole if we needed to, but it, it may be worse than I'm even knowing on.
It's structural in nature because it goes between beams and beams.
Mm-hmm.
And then when you rip it off, where are you gonna find it?
Right, right.
Nothing good, I'll tell you that.
Gotcha, okay. Because it looked like it was burnt, it doesn't look.
Yeah, it, it does look like maybe somebody got a little excited one day.
Yeah, I guess they didn't get their food ate, it got burned up.
Now, if we do the parking studies for the intent of us finding a grant to do parking, so we don't even know if we can find a grant for that.
We don't, so when you write a grant, you need, almost every grant that you write will need a, um, a needs assessment in there. Studies, when you have a study done, that shows the need for the grant. This is what it's gonna look like, this is what the impact it's gonna have on the community, it does all that, that study will do all that. So that will help strengthen, we can write grants without studies, very low success rate, but when you have a study to back up your grant, your success rate goes exponentially higher. We need to do that as a, I know this isn't the CRA board, but there is money in the CRA. We need to do that study either which way, it's whether you want to take it out of the CRA funds, I was trying to save CRA some money. She has funds for it, I'm just trying to save CRA money, but if you're looking for something to cut, I, yeah.
We can switch that too, and say that we'll come up with the twenty-seven thousand and they come up with the forty-seven thousand or forty-eight thousand.
We gotta, taking, we need this study done to get a grant, with the chance of getting a grant, but this parking is to better our downtown and put more people down there, correct?
It is.
So future outlook, that's a really big deal.
Parking.
But CRA's got the.
But CRA got the money to do it.
Yeah, they could, we could flip that number and they could cover that number without initially.
I just don't think we should take it all out.
I agree, yeah, I agree.
That's all, I agree with you, for sure.
Estimated to be seventy-five thousand, so do you want to do half and half?
What are they sitting with budget-wise?
Uh, they've got, shh, almost three hundred thousand.
So that's a big chunk.
Off the top of my head, and then they'll get another hundred and fifty, three hundred, yeah, they'll get another two fifty to three hundred during the year.
So they go.
They, they, so they could fund this.
They could fund the whole entire project if they wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, they could.
I'm not, I, I say, stick with them, I mean, maybe twenty-five thousand to their fifty thousand kind of thing, maybe.
Because I don't know any of the big projects that we have coming up in CRA.
CRA, this is her big project, this is Amy's pet project, and I really support her on it, because it solves a big problem downtown.
This has been, I mean, for as much as I'm downtown, it is the parking that people tell me, non-stop, is a problem. So we definitely need the study for sure. And I agree with Commissioner Howe, we don't want to totally turn our backs on him, and let him know that, you know, just because you got a little money, we're not in it with you.
He's got a lot of money, he's got six hundred grand.
We got seven hundred and thirty-seven to deal with.
Yeah, but.
We're buying fire trucks and cars.
I'd, I'd love to throw CRA ten grand, and then let her, and let, let, let Amy take care of the rest. If we give her ten grand, does that get us closer?
If we give her ten grand and hold off on the two vehicles, that will break us even.
Not all the vehicles at all?
If we took out the, for Jennifer and Jacob, and held them off for one more year.
No.
Okay, no, no, that's fine.
We'll, we'll knock them down on price a little bit, but we can't knock Jacob's down at all, else he's gonna be driving that bag of monsters.
The other thing is, we can always use general fund money, you know what I mean? If we need, if we get to a point where we really need something.
Well, I like the idea that the city manager had in terms of, for the, for the vacuum trailer, us being able to fund as much as possible and then his contingency can make up the difference, that's a great, great solution, in my mind.
I thought you were saying you, the contingency would pay the roof.
Oh, for the roof, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm conflating things, sorry, sorry.
Well, remember, I, I, it's contingency, I, I, I'm very protective of it, but we already bought a fire truck, you know.
Yeah, you kind of did.
I only have a hundred and fifty, but.
Yeah, let's not, like, let's not, I don't even think jumping on the pavilion, I think if we get with the citizens, let them know what we got going on, many people are out there, I think, this town's a pretty remarkable town, I think we could get something happening. And Alan, I'm willing to work with you on that, so if you, you, we'll get together and we'll call some folks and, I ain't opposed to begging.
We'll put you on there to hang a chingles now, right?
We have.
Good lord, you don't want my big behind it, if there's rot, believe me, I'll find it and I'll come right to it.
The one twenty-five includes both trucks.
That's what I was just thinking.
So.
We don't have that out of my contingency.
No, it includes both trucks, so the only, so basically, with the money we'll get back from the heavy rescue, that covers the small truck and then a portion of the new bigger truck.
Okay.
And the balance of that is a hundred and twenty-five thousand, give or take, so.
We need to be out of the owing money on vehicles business for a little bit, we, we deserve.
And so we've taken nothing out of your contingency in relating to the fire trucks or any of that stuff, and we're only thirty-three thousand off. If we did ten thousand to CRA, kept the twenty and ten for the vehicles, and include the vac truck, vac trailer, we're thirty-three seven oh six off.
I don't have, that's a hell of a lot better than doing a hundred thousand.
So can we take the thirty-three seven oh six off of the, the CRA parking study?
Um, we only have ten thousand left in there.
Oh, we've already did that, okay.
Dropped it.
Yeah, we have ten thousand left in there, and again, as we go through these, we may find there's a little bit of variation. We have the whole fiscal, well, not the whole fiscal year, nine months of the fiscal year to work down, so thirty-three thousand doesn't disturb me tremendously.
Let's, let's do this, let's make this happen. Let's go with the plan you had now, we're not gonna do the roof, that's not gonna come out of my contingency, that was twenty I committed. We're thirty, how much off?
Thirty-three seven oh six. And again, these are estimates.
Contingency's for, if you want to get these projects done, instead of doing twenty thousand on my contingency for that, we can obligate the money, we need to obligate it tonight, we'll try to save as much as we can and up to that thirty-three thousand. If we need that back trailer, because it sounds like it's pretty important, um, we'll take the thirty-three out of my contingency or general fund, we will let you know how we're involved, but we can get this funded. We're only thirty-something thousand off, we can make this happen.
So we put the vacuum truck at number seventeen?
Yes.
And everything flows down until we afford it?
Yes.
Perfect.
So can I run through each line, just so we have full disclosure, everybody knows what we're doing? Is that okay? Fire truck one twenty-five, land development code one eighty, lift station seventy, bulletproof glass eight, skater forty, hardtop three point five thousand. Thirty-five thousand for the sports complex, twenty-five hundred for rototiller, seventeen fifty warming oven, which may be lower than that. Mowers, we'll just go with one for four thousand, vehicles, twenty thousand and ten thousand. Red dot, twenty-five thousand, chairs, five thousand, three SRO cars, one forty-six, two fifty. Parking study, ten thousand, and then the excavator vacuum trailer, fifty-one, two ninety-four, with the balance coming out of contingency.
No, somewhere.
Somewhere, we'll find it, we'll find it, it'll be fine.
We can find that thirty-three thousand.
The thirty-three seven oh six will be outside of ARPA.
Okay, do we want to?
So we're only doing one mower.
Do we really want to drop that mower? I mean, it's four grand, do we, I mean, do they, if they need it, if they're, I mean, if they're trash, do we really want to drop that?
We can put it back in, I'm totally okay with that.
Put it, I say put it back in, let's, I mean, I know, I.
Yep, yep.
I got a way you can save a thousand dollars, I know that's low bearing fruit, but you can go get those chairs out the museum that you had in here and put them in the conference room, and that'll save you a thousand dollars.
What chairs?
The chairs that used to be sitting here, they're just sitting in the, they're sitting in the storage room. They could be used in the, for conference. Because nothing's wrong with them.
There we go.
And I, I don't suppose, you know, recommending that the red dot firearms come out would be a good idea with two cops up here.
It just depends, if they gotta take a long shot and your kids in the way, do you want them to be on top of it? The only thing I think about with a, hey, Chief, I got you, that's what I think about.
Wow.
I mean, I should, you know.
That escalated quickly.
You just pick out which kid you want to get it, you know what I mean?
As, as a commission, as a whole, I'm just going to go down, this isn't a vote, but I just need a heads nod so I understand where we're at. The numbers that she just gave, is everybody comfortable with that for transparency?
Yes.
Trust you, Jeremy.
Okay.
And I put the mower back in, so that's eight thousand for that line, and I took one thousand out of the chairs to bring them from five thousand to four thousand. So, everybody good with that? And that would mean thirty-six seven oh six from somewhere other than ARPA, because right now, the discussion is what do we do with ARPA?
Right.
And I know we don't like to, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't hate funding that for, or occurring that amount of interest for a year just to make sure we got it, so we don't run into a budgetary issue with that thirty-six.
Mm-hmm.
And then at the end of the year, if we're all right, I don't think we're going to incur enough interest to struggle much more than forty, if, if that.
My view on it is looking at these projects, the projects and resources that you just agreed to obligate, thirty-six thousand ain't nothing. We can make this happen for all the good stuff that's going to come out of this. You guys did a great job.
Hey, chief, are you, the twenty-five thousand for the red dots, is that your assumption and your price range? Or is that somebody else?
No, that's a, a lot of work at the last minute and consulting with the La Chao Police Department, but there is a gun back portion, so it's going to be right there near that twenty-five, so, yeah.
Okay. Just wondering, somebody said they might be able to squeeze that number down for you.
How many is it? How many, how many red dots you buying?
I think it's thirty.
Yeah.
And it's about a thousand dollars an officer. When you do the gun, the holster, and.
Yeah, it's all.
If you don't mind, I might, I've talked to somebody, might be able to work out better deal than that. Don't know yet.
So, in closing of this discussion, I really wanted to publicly thank my, um, department heads. They worked on this last minute due to an error on my part. I fully own up to it. They came up with great projects and really met the intent and the direction I wanted to head in. I'm very proud of them and I can't say enough for what they put forward. Thank you for supporting them.
Can I ask one question, Mr. Marshall? It'll be quick, I promise. A, alternative projects, new carpet paint tables and chairs in the Santa Fe room. Was that not part of the agreement and, and it was funded by the La Chao Children's Trust? You may not, may not know this, Commissioner, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, but for the, for the art camp, my understanding was that part of their financial, um, commitment was that they were going to replace those tables and, and do some work there.
We could take, An, Angela, next week, could take a look at the minutes and, um, Beck, I, that's not ringing a bell to me, but very well could be.
Well, it happened before you were here. Um, but they got some funding from the La Chao Children's Trust for that.
Angela, we could take a look into that? Okay.
Because you're right, we rent that out and it's a beautiful space, so.
And so, and then also the art camp was not, so they weren't like responsible for replacing anything after that was over with? Okay, because see, the only thing about it is I don't believe that was ever a thing from the children's trust. I believe it was mentioned in the meeting. I don't want to call anybody false, but I don't think that the children's trust actually do that.
Huh. Okay, okay. All right. Thank you so much for this. You guys did a great job.
Diane and Angela, do we need any vote for the ARPA? Or, because we just obligated it.
I would go ahead and vote, just to have it, you know, dot the i and cross the t.
Just a simple, just a simple motion of what Diane said?
Okay.
I make a motion to what Diane said.
What Diane said. I second what Diane said.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Or do we have any citizen comments?
I'm sorry.
Welcome to the podium, Ms. Evans. Thanks for sticking with us this whole time.
Well, this is the agenda item that was my purpose for coming tonight. Um, I'd like to go down memory lane another time tonight. The, the, when we were first as a city, um, told we had these ARPA funds available, it's my understanding the very first item on the agenda was to give our first responders bonuses because of what they went through during the, um, COVID crisis that we had. The commissioners all agreed that this was a good idea, but there was never any discussion about how much these bonuses were going to be. Four city employees decided that every single city employee was going to get a bonus. It ended up being a large bonus. My FOIA request showed that it was over four hundred thousand dollars committed to the bonuses where there was no input from the commissioners at all. I want to say right now that this transparency is fabulous. Um, Mr. Marshall, you said, you know, right off the bat, you said, okay, we can reduce this, the debt load here. And the way that you brought this information together, the way that the committee has interacted, we are very fortunate indeed to have you at our helm. And I have to, I, this is, this is such a transformation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans, for the comment. I will say, it was my staff. I did very little. I did very, very little.
That sounds like a, a true leader to, to, uh.
Thank you. It's the truth. And, and I will, and in closing with it, I will say, my department heads, and I said it to them, and I said it to all of you, this felt very rushed because of an error on my part. I own up to it, but I think we got good stuff done tonight and it was my staff.
I, I'm, I'm really, really impressed.
Thank you.
Very impressed.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Okay, moving on. City attorney report.
Mr. Mayor, I think this is our ethics presentation.
And, uh, you all are welcome. Jeremy told me before the meeting that we're going to have a good High Springs representation there, so we're looking forward to you being at the Danielle and Kirsten show. And, uh, and hopefully we'll have a little, little, uh, nice camaraderie for you while, by the other public officials that'll be there and something, something, some vittles to eat as well. That's right. That's all I had in this mission. City manager reporting update?
I'll go through it fast. So, I wanted to thank the commission and the fire trucks, truck committee, um, put together for that light rescue. The first call that went to within hours of it was a, they responded to a puppy that was trapped in a forty-foot sinkhole. The truck had just been in service for a few hours, rolled out. They did a rope rescue and saved this puppy. You know how I feel about my dogs. So, thank you for the, the vision to see how, how that went down. Reminder, Christmas praise this Saturday. Um, city staff has worked really hard with, um, Sharon Decker should be commended, the work she's put into the Christmas tree lighting and the parade that's Saturday. Big thank you to Pastor Adam Joy. He'll be hosting a city staff, like, holiday party next week. So, city hall will be closed for two hours that day. One hour? We're going to be closed for two hours that day?
That's an executive decision right there. I like that.
I want them, I want them to go and take their time and.
What day is it?
The nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Thursday, or just like twelve, one, two, thirty.
So, we're going to close for two hours. I want them to get a chance and spend time and not rush them through their holiday party. Lastly, a reminder, the police department is having Operation Holiday Cheer will be held on December twenty-third. Staff and commission volunteers are welcome to join. Please meet at the police department at nine AM. That is all I have there.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner comments and concerns? And I'm putting that Christmas party in my, where is the Christmas? Is it going to be at, oh, it's going to be at, uh, Astor Joyce's.
Next to Subway.
Yeah, I was pointing that way. Isn't it that way? Right over there.
Next to Subway.
Yeah, I know where Subway is, believe me. Mr. Howe?
Hmm, I got nothing.
Well said.
Yeah, I want to, I happened to run to the fire department one day and saw them actually pinstriping the chief's truck and then getting the light duty truck ready, and then I saw it in La Chao way. Going to a call. I'm grateful that it's worked out. I'm glad to see it. I appreciate getting the truck committee. They did a good, great job. I can't wait to see the medium rescue, what it's going to look like. So, good job, guys.
Thanks for saving the puppy. You know, that was one of my questions. Can it still get the dog out of the sinkhole? And it wasn't even little Kim this time, so. I knew, I saw that. I saw the picture. Um, in terms of Operation Holiday Cheer, um, I talked to Ms. Angie today. She may need some help wrapping gifts tomorrow, so she might call me if anybody might be available to help wrap. She is, uh, she could use some help probably in the afternoon, perhaps. Just putting that out there in case.
She's going to be over there?
She's going to be at the police station, I think.
Over there? Sorry.
You, you guys, Subway and the police station are different. Um, so she puts in a lot of effort and she's not going to be able to participate in the giveaway this year. Um, so anything we could do to help her, I'm sure she would love. Um, Kevin, the tree lighting was phenomenal. You did an outstanding job. You did a great job. Mr. Mayor, your comments were right on point. I appreciated that.
I had a good speechwriter.
You did?
He didn't think I'd say a few words.
Yeah, I know. I love it. Um, Mr. Marshall, thank you for coming. It was nice having the city manager there. And, you know, bringing your wife always brings up your stock value, so keep bringing her. Um, and I wanted to say congratulations to all the high school band students that auditioned last week for the honor band. High Springs is well represented. We've got some really, really talented kids here. High Springs was also well represented in Tallahassee on Sunday. There were a number of High Springs kids there who made it into the tri-state honor band. That's Florida, Georgia, and Alabama. And they were amazing. Santa Fe High School's own drum major, Imani, rocked her tuba. She did a beautiful job, so, and, uh, that's about all I've got. Merry Christmas to everybody. I've got some grapefruit if anybody wants it. So, make your wife happy.
I will.
Your wife already has some, so, thank you.
All right. Um, speaking of saving puppies, our, um, employee of the week, he came while he was off of work to help save this puppy. So, our employee of the week is firefighter Chris Tatum. And we want everybody to know that you still got a chance to, um, tell us about the employee of the year, who you want to nominate. You can email Ms. Angela your recommendations, and that will be done the first meeting of next year, right? Uh, whenever, whenever the city manager tells me.
I love it. A few words? No. Uh, I just want to say thank you to everybody who, who worked so hard here. It's nice to have people laughing again in here. And even though we don't always agree, it doesn't have, it doesn't have to get nasty and it just moves on. And that's the way High Springs is. That's, this is the High Springs I know, so thank everybody for that. And I, Merry Christmas, and I will entertain a motion.